Want to share with the planning commissioners? He would like to, and actually he can share this with Pete as well, hand this down because I think Pete will find it amusing. Anyway, while cleaning out some files at the McLaughlin House, they came across this lovely pamphlet that says, "Planning Oregon City dated November 17th, July 1978." Yes, and it says, yes, "Working together. With little time and not much notice, the eight neighborhood associations organized a float to enter territorial day parade. Over 1,000 blue and white tissue flowers decorated the flatbed float, et cetera, et cetera." So that's the neighborhood news. And then it says, here's the neighborhoods. It says, "Ely's meeting in a certain place, and Southwest Neighborhood is meeting. The McLaughlin Neighborhood will hold its regular meeting on Thursday, July 20th at Atkinson. The annual Univista picnic will be on Tuesday, such and such day, Canema and River Crest." So those are some neighborhoods that were in existence. And then it talks about the Eli and Hilltop meeting coming up. And then it says, "Come to an open house. The Oregon City Planning Staff has completed the draft of the comprehensive plan. You are cordially invited to attend an open house. The open house is being held so you can review the draft of the plan and find out more about what's going on. You can see what has been done so far and what still needs to be done." So Wednesday, July 26th, so this is very opportune, 1978 apparently. You cannot attend a draft that will be presented before the Planning Commission on Tuesday, July, couldn't be the 25th anyway. So it's the day before. And it's going to be at the city council chambers at 7th and John Adams. And then it talks about, it says, what, when, where, why, and who. And it says, "Everyone who live in Oregon City and its surrounding area will be affected by the plan revisions." In other words, "you," and then a million exclamation points. Then on the back, it says, "Plan goes to a draft." And it talks about, this was what I thought was interesting. So more will be said in the upcoming month on the content of the plan. Some of the highlights of the draft so far are, "Population of Oregon City is projected to increase to 34,000 by the year 2000." Population projections are in the housing section. There is a shortage of housing for the lowest and highest incomes. Check the housing section. And then it says, "Historic districts are to be considered in three areas: Canema, downtown, and portions of the McLaughlin Neighborhood." What are some of the alternatives, advantages, and disadvantages for location of municipal government services? It's located in the public facilities section, and it says, "There's more to come." So it sounds like we're having like another deja vu.
Only exactly 40 years later.
I know, because one of the things that I, so it says, "Planning..."
I like that bad part that you're about to read.
Yes, "Planning Oregon City is a monthly newsletter written by the Planning Department and Oregon City residents. Deal Box 631, Oregon City 97045." It also mentions in here the CIC staff person, who was handling the CIC at the time. So I think it's interesting that this was given to me, and what we're doing right now is very, very similar. And it's interesting from the standpoint that we're having another open house about project, and the fact that the city's going through another update. One of my first jobs when I got here was the update of the conference of plans. So again, we're still doing it. It just keeps going around. But anyway, so I thought you guys might enjoy this. Well, I think we could change a few minor, well, I think we need to change the date.
I like the color.
But there were 17 apparently of these. So this was number 17. I don't know how many more there were. So this was apparently a weekly or monthly publication that the city put out.
Pretty close on the population.
Anyway, hand went down to carry because I made 10 copies.
I've got one.
So anyway, so, see, it's kind of exciting.
Thanks for sharing.
So it came out on this paper. This cut paper does not copy very well. All right, so do we have any people in the audience tonight who would like to talk about something that is not on our agenda? Because we'll give you an opportunity. If you are here for the work session, we will definitely get there as well. But we wanted to make that space available. Nobody? Everybody's here about the items on the agenda? Okay, awesome. All right, so we will move to that then, Pete.
Great, thank you. Okay, first and foremost, I'd like to let you know that tonight, oh, sorry. I have with me Elizabeth Decker of Jet Planning, and she's the consultant who's been working hard on these code changes. And tonight, we are going to dive into some of our code. But I do want to inform you that we apologize for not getting you all of the code on time. And for that reason, we're going to concentrate tonight mostly on the residential missing middle housing options. And then ask you if you can attend another work session prior to the first hearing on August 13th. And I understand that this is a lot of code to go through. So I would like to sympathize with you about that. And I'm understanding if there's a call by a majority of the planning commission for additional time to work through this stuff, we'll do what we can to accommodate it. And so without further ado, just give a quick overview of what we've been doing. So before you, what we've given you is a printout of the code chapters which have been posted on the city website to date. So these were posted two weeks ago for the work session, and we're giving you printouts of those. And I'm also, I've also given you a summary dated July 6th of these larger code changes. And so the code amendments consist of two categories. There are code amendments that we've been working through for the last year as part of the equitable housing project. And then there are code amendments that are not related to the equitable housing project specifically, but are part of the same chapter. So we've bundled those up together. And we will try to clarify what is an amendment for equitable housing and what is related to process and procedural cleanups, cleanup, and housekeeping codes.
Pete, which is the, where's the July 6th?
Sorry, this is the summary of the code amendments. Yeah, the white one.
Did you have any data? Oh, yes, it's July 6th, okay, all right.
Okay. And I'm also printing out right now a packet to give you that Elizabeth is going to go through. But we don't expect you to digest that tonight. We're just going to give that to you, and we're going to go through it. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Elizabeth and kick us off. Thank you.
Does she need applause?
You can decide after I present whether...
No applause, just throw money.
I'll be right back.
Okay, great. So good evening, I'm Elizabeth Decker. As Pete mentioned, with Jet Planning, I do a lot of work on zoning code and have been working with the city over the past year on developing these equitable housing zoning code amendments. And so we pulled together, this draft has been through several iterative drafts. And then, as Pete said, apologize, I really, it's nice of him to take the blame, but it's really my fault for not getting the code to you until this evening. So we wanted to give you an overview of the key provisions, as soon as he has an actual copy to hand to you, and go through what those might be, point out some of the highlights, and then look for some of your written comments. You can email directly to Pete after this hearing or after this work session. And then we'll also continue to review at our upcoming meetings. So just as background, if this hasn't been drummed into you sufficiently, our equitable housing goal is really looking at increasing diversity, quality. Really, it's about more, more, more housing, more different types of housing, more housing overall, and more housing with better amenities that can support the growing population. You know, we were projecting 34,000 in the year 2000, and it just really continues to tick upward as we look out into the future. And just as that pamphlet that Denise shared said that there was a shortage of housing for certain groups in the city, we still have some shortages that we're attempting to meet, particularly as housing demographics and household needs are continuing to change. To the extent that we're forecasting correctly for the next 20 years, we'll see what they think of our work in another 20 years. So as Pete said, we thought that we'd focus more on the missing middle housing types for the purposes of this work session, since they are a lot of the sort of the most tangible aspects of this code and also the part of the amendments that really are the biggest changes to the existing structure. Okay. And also the part that really influences the day-to-day lives of most of the Oregon City residents that could be affected by these amendments, since they impact all of the existing single-family, medium-density, and high-density zones. All right, so to give you a little overview. So Pete told me that you all, yes.
Just want to make sure, does everybody in the audience have a, are there copies of this that you are going over for the people who are in the audience?
Yeah, there should be a public review copy for all the code.
So I mean particularly this, these, the summary? Because maybe they want to take notes on it or something.
Yeah, no, it is more useful to point out where it is.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sure. And just for everyone's purposes, I was told that you really like code citations. So I thought we'd start with just an overview of, you know, a bird.
It's Bob.
I said it.
It's Bob.
It's because you want sufficient specificity.
We always have sufficient specificity.
So throughout the evening, I'll try to reference the code chapters as well as the page number in your packet where this information is found. So as an overview, one of the first changes that we're making is taking all of the single-family zones, what they're currently called, R10, R8, and R6, and combining them into a single low-density zone chapter. There's significant overlap between those. And so instead of having three different versions of the chapter, we're just putting it together with some tables that summarize those key provisions, things like allowed uses and densities. Likewise, we're treating, bringing R5 and R3.5 together in the R10, the proposed 17.10 chapter, calling those the medium-density zones. I'll point out that that is consistent with the comprehensive plan designations. They treat R3.5 and R5 as medium-density designations. However, the previous nomenclature in the existing code calls R5 a single-family zone. So we're really just aligning it better with the, so that we better implement the comprehensive plan. And then R2 is the high-density zone, so that gets its own chapter in 17.12. And then we bring all the design standards into subsequent chapters dealing with single-family and duplex in 17.14. Townhouse Design is a new chapter proposed in 17.16. And then 17.18 brings in the multifamily design standards. Those are currently in the Site Plan and Design Review Chapter. And we thought they were important enough to pull them out into their own chapter. Yes, Damon?
Just for clarification though, 17.12 and 14 and 16 and 18 already existed. They're being eliminated as they exist and republished as this new design.
Correct. And so the reason that we are able to reuse those numbers is by combining the R10, R8, and R6.
That's fine, I'm just...
Yeah. Just clarifying how we got those extra numbers.
Seventeen eighteen being something else, that it does exist, so.
Correct. And so these are all the proposed titles, and we're proposing to strike in their entirety 17.08 through 17.20 in order to make room for these new chapters.
R3.5, as it currently exists, not counting the concept plan areas, is primarily a single-family residential zone.
But there are townhouses within that.
No, there aren't townhouses within that. That's what they're proposing.
You want to bet?
We don't have any townhouses.
There's townhouses on 16th. There's five townhouses.
Well, that's not what they're proposing.
Well, you didn't say that. You said R3.5.
Yeah. It allows single-family detached, but it also allows row houses and duplexes. So it's called the two-family dwelling district under current code.
I think it's just called the dwelling district.
Dwelling district, yeah.
It's very confusing.
Primarily, when it's, before you came up, the city came up with R3.5, the zoning, I'll use my property specifically, was Zone RC4, which basically meant that it was Residential Conservation District 4, which separated it from other districts that allowed...
Is your mic on? Sorry.
Yep, it's on.
Oh.
Yep, it's either red light.
Just point your microphone.
That's his microphone.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just hard to hear you there saying something.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I'll say that one of the reasons that we're proposing this nomenclature change, not to make too big a deal about it, but to call it the medium-density rather than the single-family or the multifamily, is that we're really just focusing on the general intensity of development with the variety of housing types that can be allowed within it.
Yeah, well, it is kind of a big deal. I mean, I know some people don't think it is, but it really is a big deal.
And all those uses, the single-family detached, single-family attached, and duplexes are already permitted in R3.5. So there's no changes proposed to those particular uses. All right, and the last chapter I'd point out is sort of a new amalgam of standards that affect residential uses, some of the sort of special residential types. So the proposed 17.20 that would replace the existing chapter in its entirety has to do with ADUs, cluster housing, internal conversions, and manufactured homes, both individually and in parks. All right, so first topic to discuss is the single-family detached homes. Just as a note, these slides will look pretty familiar graphically. And I did add in some detail that we'll get to for each following it. But just quick overview, there's really, the big story here is that there is no big story. Single-family detached homes are proposed to continue to be permitted in all the zones where they are currently permitted without significant changes to the density or dimensional standards. The only zone where single-family detached is not permitted is in the R2 zone. There was some discussion in our public advisory team throughout the process about whether or not to permit very small, single-family detached homes in the R2 zone. And ultimately, the recommendation was not to permit those for fear that it would be too much competition with the higher-density types of housing like multifamily and townhouses that we would like to see in the limited R2 zone in order to better provide for increased numbers of residential units to meet our equitable housing goals.
Roughly where, roughly where is R2?
Boy. It's by the high school west of the campus.
New or old high school?
Old, new.
Okay.
And we have R2 west of Malala between Singer Creek Park and the Malala Avenue in the Mountain View Homes Avenue area, around there. Quite a bit of it. And I don't think it's the map.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to kind of roughly know.
Interesting that we would allow multiple family when we've got some natural resource issues going on in that particular, that Mountain View corridor.
Yeah, I mean, that map, the zoning for that area was adopted in 2004. And I know its challenge was both what you overlays as well as sewer capacity. So, or sewer availability, I should say.
Berkeley Hills Neighborhood Association came in about four years ago and asked for some of that to be rezoned because of those natural resource issues.
And part of that with rezoning, I don't want to get off topic, but it was based off the housing inventory that was done with the original complaint from 2004, so, yeah.
We all know that the shape of land, the contours, have a direct impact on the cost of developing housing. And that sometimes means isolation of housing units because of slope and ravines and potential for slides and access and things like that. And it becomes a real challenge for design of a subdivision. Are we making any accommodations for a mixed housing profile, so to speak? And I use that word loosely.
You're talking about different?
I'm talking about a plan development on a large scale. Now, are we making any kind of a chapter which would allow that so that we could deal with it on a, as it was designed, rather than nitpicking a thing together and sinking it because of the minutia involved? Been there, done that.
We did talk about adding a PUDs chapter back then. Planning Commission did.
Yeah, and the PAT recommendation on that was to use the...
Was I asleep that night?
No, you were the one that recommended it.
What was that?
We all agree.
I wondered why I was, it sounded premature to me.
Deja vu, right?
Yeah, I think words you found for...
Yeah, and so the way that we're proposing to deal with that, and the full details are not included in tonight, but yes, that's a great segue into what we'll talk about at the next work session is using the existing master plan process and adapting it so that it can serve for those more challenging sites or other sites just where the developer wants more flexibility and how uses are combined and how things are laid out.
Did you look at the size of proposed development in terms of its cost? Big versus small? Because the bigger it gets, it would seem to me would be the, it'd be getting less expensive because you could master plan it.
Sure.
And the only thing that's going to hold you up is availability of money in the marketplace as to whether the banks are going to cough up that kind of stuff based on their long-range projections and things like that. Did you take into consideration any of this? Or did there's...
See Pete nodding, so.
I think we're allowing master plan, residential master plan for at least, what are we saying, three acres? It used to be 10 acres would be the minimum you would have to have a master plan for. So that's some considerations. The concept plan areas are fairly fragmented. And, you know, a developer could assemble multiple parcels under separate ownership in order to facilitate a master plan. But we should discuss what kind of acreage is conducive to doing one. Whether it's five acres minimum or 10 acre minimum or something like that.
Well, I think the private sector almost demands it because of the economic situation that we're going to be confronted here in the next 20 years.
Yeah.
I really do.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's a discretionary option. Type through your view, goes to the Planning Commission. We're proposing to strengthen the residential component of the master plan chapter so that it addresses residential development criteria. Currently, it's written toward institutional development. And so the process for master plan is similar to a PUD currently, yeah.
My last statement. The one thing that I've experienced in the last 25 years in this field is it's not so much what you say, it's how you say it. The process kills you. People get caught up and they start getting confused because the process gets so bogged down in detail. And it would seem to me that on both sides of the fence, the public and the private sector, the better we design that process, the better we're going to come up with plans that make sense and something that the city can allow because it's not costing the city an arm and a leg. So I would strongly recommend that we not only look at alternative housing, but alternative processes.
Yeah, thanks. So to pick up with ADUs, ADUs are already permitted in the city. And we are updating this both as part of equitable housing, but also timing happens to work out that we are really in the midst of an ADU regulatory renaissance, I would say. The state passed some changes, Inc. Bill 1051, that require ADUs to be permitted in almost all cities with far fewer restrictions than many currently require. And so jurisdictions across the state and across metro are working on updating their ADU standards. DLCD has published some pretty supportive guidance. And so along those veins, looking to use these as an additional option to support equitable housing. We're proposing some fairly substantive changes to the ADU standards. And you can see these on page 29 of your packet.
So just for the public, Department of Land Conservation and Development Commission, people don't know what DLCD is. We do, but doesn't mean they do.
Yes, DLCD is the State Department that's in charge of planning. And so they've, they're in charge of implementing the new regulations.
I still don't understand why we are moving the owner occupancy requirement. If you have an accessory dwelling unit, why are we going to allow people to create ADUs and basically just...
Rent both of them.
Well...
But that also ends up running afoul of the Airbnb industry too, that these two things will converge if you don't have some. And then the other part of it too is that you might want to consider, some of these houses have multiple owners. And so who is the actual owner that has to occupy?
Oh, I saw that, but...
That kind of thing. But I do, I agree, I echo Denise's concerns about the owner occupancy requirement.
And then I was reading the ADU rules, and I'm trying to find them to get the right things, but it reads to me like you can have one ADU between 600 and 800 feet on your property.
Up to 800 square feet, yes.
Between, but specifically between 600 and 800 feet.
There's no minimum size.
The current regulations break them down to 200 or less, 200...
Currently.
Yeah. And based on the strikeouts, they're going to, it's going to stay that way. I'm trying to find it in all this stuff, but, because when you say page 29, that doesn't mean anything on our packets.
Oh, they are labeled, the pages are labeled.
So the packet I just handed out?
Yeah.
The big ones?
I was looking on the big giant one.
The packet I just handed out with the staples in it, it's 38 pages, or...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, page 29, all right. Everybody on page 29?
Oh, this one?
Yeah. That was the guy, the big one.
So many, so many packets. Okay, got it.
Denise, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What has owner occupancy got to do with land use?
Everything. Oh.
Well, if you don't have the owner occupying the unit, you could end up having God only knows who living there and doing God only knows what. Land use has a lot to do with whether or not you can keep the peace in the neighborhoods.
What do you mean by who?
And if you want to allow EDUs to happen, they should be regulated in such a way that they are compatible with the existing neighborhood.
Yeah, but what do you mean by who, Paul, or who?
Well, I just wanted to check real quick. The basic idea behind this was, from an equity standpoint, no other housing type is regulated as far as tenancy in the zoning code. We don't regulate whether you can live or rent in a unit. It's just a zoning code. That's the current zoning code.
Yeah.
So all of that, you know, those are legitimate points you're making, but that's where this proposal was coming from.
But that doesn't mean we can't do that though, right?
No, it doesn't mean you can't do it. But you might want to think of it, you should look at, I mean, our charge was to look at the zoning code through an equitable housing lens to remove barriers. So when it came to a difficult call in terms of balancing neighborhood harmony and existing neighborhoods with the equity issue, then, you know, you'd come down on one side or the other.
Boy, you're getting into some vague areas.
So anyway, what...
So removing the owner occupancy requirement was a PAT recommendation, was it?
Yeah, and just a little bit more background on this issue because you're certainly not the first community to ask all these same questions about, well, what does this mean? And what are ADUs for? And, you know, who are we building them for? And how do we integrate them into the neighborhood? And is owner occupancy a part of how they're integrated into the neighborhood? And I think that, you know, some of the background that's come up as communities wrestle with this, there's actually the first statistically significant survey of ADU owners out recently from the PSU Research Lab. And they found that even in the city of Portland that doesn't have owner occupancy requirements, they still find 70 to 80% of units are owner occupied. So most of these projects are being done by homeowners. It takes a significant amount of both financial as well as personal capital to add an ADU to your property. So these are people that are generally committed to it. There probably are cases where a developer sees the opportunity to add an additional unit to rent. But again, from an equitable perspective, the equitable lens is both we're adding more flexibility for owners of those properties, whether they live there or don't. If they don't live there and happen to be renting out two units, we've now increased the number of units that are available for rent that are available for Oregon City residents to live in. If owners do live there, we're increasing the flexibility for their use. They may intend, for example, to live in it, you know, right now. Their needs may change in the next five years. They may find themselves renting units. And so it just gives them that comfort level of, if I make this investment, will I be able to continue to use this property in a way that pays dividends and meets my evolving family needs? As far as, just also along the lines of removing barriers, a big issue that's come up statewide with owner occupancy requirements is that banks and lending institutions really struggle with how to interpret owner occupancy requirements. As Pete mentioned, they're not present in any other dwelling type. And so I'm not an expert in assessment, but what I understand is that a lot of times assessors come out and they don't know how to value an ADU. And if there's an owner occupancy requirement on it, then sometimes that ADU gets valued at practically nothing because, as opposed to a duplex that they can value based on potential rental income, if there's no, you know, if there's a concern because of owner occupancy that it couldn't be rented in the future, then the assessment comes in much lower. That affects whether a homeowner can get financing to build the ADU to begin with, and then whether... and then whether they can sell and continue to, you know, transfer that property to someone else, whether it can assess high enough to qualify for a loan for the next person to purchase the home. And so, um, what I understand from talking to a lot of ADU development experts is owner occupancy really isn't so much a problem on a day-to-day basis. A lot of would-be homeowners that want to develop it don't have a lot of concerns, they, they're invested in the project, but it just comes out over successive years, um, with these financing restrictions. And that, again, as we're looking to support equitable housing, it really doesn't appear to support, um, you know, greater integration with the neighborhood in that even without it, many ADUs are still owner occupied. And then the last piece I point out is.
Thank you for explaining that, because I wanted the public to hear that, so.
Yeah, could I just make one last point?
Sure.
Uh, and then last piece, just as, uh, as far as short-term rentals, I know there's often a lot of concern around that. Uh, and the recommendation out of the PAT is that if short-term rentals are a concern, um, then that's something that should be addressed holistically for all dwelling types, not just ADUs. Again, the statistically, this ADU survey that's out recently from PSU, um, shows that yes, ADUs are being used as short-term rentals, but not necessarily at significantly higher rates than other types of dwellings around the city.
No, I would like us to put that down because the thing, the thing that I have the, the concern about, not so much the owner occupancy, I do not want to see ADUs used for commercial uses, which to me, a short-term rental is a commercial use and I don't think that's appropriate in a single-family residential or multiple-family or whatever zone where there's residential occupancy. And if it says somewhere in here that they cannot be used for commercial occupancy, I don't know if that's the correct term.
Yeah.
So you're saying renting an ADU is a commercial use?
No, I'm saying that using it for a commercial use such as a Airbnb, uh, something that's not a residential occupancy. I don't consider a short-term stay a residential occupancy because they're coming, I mean, it's a transient use.
You mean a permanent, uh, use?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you've got, it, it just, you know, you've got issues with off-street parking, you've got, you end up with all sorts of other problems that having commercial, you know, people don't move into residential districts to have commercial occupancies, you know. Buy them.
So.
Sure, and again, please.
Back to my question.
Yeah, so yes, your question about, so are we getting down to increasing?
So.
One DAU per?
No, this, this is about seventeen fifty-four ten, which is accessory buildings and uses.
And you're on page?
It's in their big original packet, so you got to just find it under seventeen fifty-four, they're numerically, they're.
What's the closest page?
Well, they're numerically stapled together, so, um, and each section's numbered, so I can't say it's.
Seventeen oh eight, so seventeen fifty-four must be at the back. Seventeen fifty-two, so it's down here.
So anyway, um, so it breaks down accessory structures under, in three groups. Two hundred and last, two hundred to six hundred, six hundred plus. And it doesn't distinguish between accessory structures and ADUs.
Right, and the, the short answer to the question is that section would not apply to accessory dwelling units, only the proposed seventeen twenty oh ten would apply to ADUs.
There's no strikeouts of ADUs in seventeen fifty-four.
And that is a great housekeeping amendment and I appreciate your close reading of that.
Because right now, just, just reading seventeen fifty-four, if I make an ADU that's six hundred square feet, I can only have one on my property. But if I make it five ninety-nine, I can have as many as I want on my property. And that's definitely not, you know, especially some of the older properties that are like a third of an acre, like mine. And I own the property next door, that's a third of an acre, I could put like twenty-seven of them on my property.
True.
I don't think that's what anybody in my neighborhood.
No, and, uh, I mean, we'll get to, the ADU standards specifically say you can only have one ADU per dwelling, um, on your property and if there needs to be anything closed, close the loop in seventeen fifty-four to say that it specifically only applies to accessory structures and not to accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, I just, just, and, and.
But wouldn't these accessory structures apply to things that are not occupied? That's what I, that's how I read seventeen fifty-four.
But it says seventeen fifty-four B, residential accessory structures, including accessory dwelling units. So it specifically says it applies to EDUs.
Good cut.
So you need to strike the including.
Thank you.
Because now it'll be in this new section.
That needs to be.
Yeah, the, the including needs to be struck and then if it's, you got a horse barn and you got a tool shed, then it is what it is for, for these.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
All right. Because that was just sparing the.
Commissioners, do you have any concerns about having more than one ADU on a parcel?
Well, right now it's limited to just one.
Well, I think it should stay to one.
Yeah, and that's what the recommendation is.
Well, what is it we're trying to?
Well, that's what it says, consider two, I, I, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, I think one.
Just a background is that there was consideration of whether to increase the ADU allowance to two per dwelling. Uh, and that would be in line with the DLCD recommendation to better further ADU development and equitable housing. However, the PAT recommendation was to keep it at one ADU per dwelling, uh, so we're bringing you that recommendation, but with the background that you, if you wish, you could recommend increasing it to two.
I think we're, consensus, we're wanting to keep it at one.
Do we have a declared purpose for an ADU? What is the purpose it's trying to achieve?
Yes, indeed. If you, again, on page twenty-nine, um, proposed section seventeen twenty oh ten A talks about the purpose of ADUs and lists several different things to support homeowners, um, and, uh, greater opportunities to use their property, adding affordable housing units to the existing inventory, supporting more efficient use of existing housing stock, developing housing units, um, that are appropriate for people at a variety, variety of stages in the life cycle and creating new housing units while respecting the look and scale of single-family neighborhoods.
So in, in essence, it could, uh, double the density of zone?
The family density, but not necessarily the housing density, because they're limited to eight hundred square feet.
It could double the dwelling unit density, uh, but one would be significantly smaller and I.
Not necessarily, because my house is nine hundred and twenty square feet, so eight hundred is pretty much an identical house.
But it's still a large enough for a person or a family to live in, if they had to. So in essence, what you're doing is doubling the density of a zone.
Potentially, yeah.
However, just anecdotally from, not anecdotally, but from the field, um, the highest rate of ADU adoption anywhere on the West Coast is in Vancouver, B C. And they're seen as, I mean, a runaway success story, depending on one's perspective.
Thank you for saying that.
Thirty-three percent of single-family detached dwellings in Vancouver, B C have ADUs. Portland locally, that many of us think of as, you know, an ADU on, in every backyard, is that one to two percent of single-family detached homes, um, that have ADUs right now. So it's very unlikely that Oregon City would see a full doubling of their density, even permitting ADUs for every home.
Well, I think you run into some, I think there may, we have a couple of them, or at least two or three, in McLaughlin and part of the issue in the conservation district is that, you know, those weren't dwelling units that were commonly seen in a historic district, at least in our city, maybe they are in some other towns. So I think in terms of your question, I would recommend for all neighborhoods that they retain the, the compatibility standards. I think it's important that for livability purposes, that whether it's a historic district or not, that there be some compatibility so that they actually fit into the neighborhood, that they look like they belong there and they're not just something that somebody added on like a little spaceship on top of something else. And I think you end up getting, you have some issues if you, you're saying allow an increase from forty to sixty. I know in some of the zoning districts, we, there is a minimum size for an addition. And that has to do, again, with compatibility issues and I think making a blanket across the board, I mean, it's kind of like when you build a garage. It should, it should fit, you know, it's either you do light garage, light house, or you do something that makes it look compatible to the original dwelling.
I agree. The question is, how do we define compatibility so that everybody agrees?
So under current, yeah.
There are things, basic things, like roof, fish, siding.
Under current code, under the design requirements for an ADU, you have a requirement for the matching of exterior finished materials. Similar trim, windows that match in proportion in width and height and orientation and eaves that project at the same projection. This proposal would be to require compatibility through similar exterior.
And, uh, I actually was just taking a look at this today and so actually the, um, the latest version hot, hot off the presses, sorry to cut your knees out from underneath you, Pete, is to retain the existing language. And so a little background on design compatibility is that part of Senate Bill ten fifty-one required that ADUs be held, um, be reviewed under clear and objective standards. And so although we propose simplifying this to, you know, more general design compatibility language, that would run us afoul of the Senate Bill ten fifty-one requirements for clear and objective standards. And so when I took another look at it today, um, the existing standards are much more clear and objective in the sense that, you know, requiring the existing finished material to be the same as the principal dwelling unit, that is clear and objective.
It's clear.
It may or may not be a great idea, you know, the, the common sort of questions around this is, you know, one, what if you have a not-so-great house? Do you really want to match that and, and replicate it? Two, you know, what if there's a little, just as there's architectural variety along the street, you know, one house next to the next house, my neighbor's house doesn't look identical to mine and some of that added character is what contributes to, you know, the feel of the block and the feel of the neighborhood. And so do we really need that, that matchy-match look, um, between a primary dwelling and its ADU compared to accessory structures? For example, if someone were to build a garage or their horse barn or tool shed, they aren't held to those same standards. Um, and so again, also from the equity lens, are we, is that creating a barrier, um, in terms of how these ADUs get designed? Most of them are custom designs at this point, uh, homeowners retain an architect, um, and have something designed that does meet their particular needs and, and matches their house. You hear anecdotes about, you know, somebody has a nineteen fifty's ranch house and they really, you know, saw this image in a, in a newspaper about this super cool modern ADU that they want to build that now they can't because it doesn't meet the design compatibility standards. It's a very nice ADU, it just doesn't happen to match.
Oh, I saw that article in the paper, the, the fellow and somebody that I'm aware of, they were prefab and it went behind a, another house.
Yeah, great example.
They were completely juxtaposed to one another, you know, and again, my personal opinion stuck out like a sore thumb. I mean, I can see somebody come in proposing an ADU with corrugated metal, you know, panels and.
And it'll happen.
You know.
And someone could have a tool shed of exactly the same size out of those exact same materials under the current code and so.
Maybe in some parts of the, but anyway, so again, I think having some, some clear and objective standards, I can see up in Hillendale where a lot of those houses were built with T one eleven, we probably don't want to put T one eleven, but they could put. They could, yeah, they don't make it anymore, but they could put hardy plank or something to that effect so that it has, gives them, you know, a residential finish. I don't want to see anybody building any ADUs out of cargo containers or, you know. They're very popular now with, for restaurants.
Yes.
I don't think you want to live in one, but.
No, I did.
You lived in a cargo container?
Yeah, I mean, does it start?
I'm sorry.
Hey, it had an AC, I was happy. Better than Marines in the town.
Bulletproof?
No?
This was next to the settling storage.
Well, it probably fit the caliber.
I had my foxhole and I was happy.
All right, um, so I think that.
So we're proposing to, we're going to retain them?
Retain the design standards, one per.
Yeah.
And the next question is forty to sixty? I like the eight hundred square foot, I think that's a reasonable, you can.
That's pretty good.
And eight hundred is sort of the, the, I, I've audited all the ADU code regulations in the metro area, twenty-seven jurisdictions, uh, and that's really the sweet spot, that's the, the most common. And I think to point out with those percentages, that most people, most dwelling units, the nine hundred square feet dwellings aside, most places, most of them are going to cap out at eight hundred square feet, not sixty percent. Um, and so in terms again of an equity issue, allowing that eight hundred square feet is, um, up to eight hundred square feet is really about greater equity for those smaller homes, it gives them additional room, um, by going up to sixty percent.
I think in McLaughlin and Canine, that would not apply.
And the historic review would still apply in those districts and if a different size, um, was felt to be more compatible with those, with those districts, then that could be implemented through historic review.
Size, you can't have it more than X percent of the existing dwelling.
Then that would continue to apply.
Yes, I know, the more restrictive would apply.
Correct.
I don't want to see an ADU the same size or a garage the same size as the primary dwelling, that would be just.
I thought some of those carriage houses were.
Yeah, you don't have any left unfortunately, so we don't have that to compare to, except for the lad carriage house, but his house was gigantic. Lad's original house.
All right, any other comments on ADUs before we move on?
Anybody in the audience have any questions about ADUs?
Okay, come on up to the mic, you have to be here. Well, he's coming up, also under fifty-four refers to one and two family dwellings, so I don't know if that needs to be looked at as part of the.
Thanks.
Just need to introduce yourself and just say, I'm from Oregon City or I'm from Clockmouth County.
Patrick Grecktonwald from Oregon City. Um, I have concerns that, uh, there's no wording in here about, um, industry standard or building requirements. Uh, and then there's also nothing that cuts out things like container living, which, um, has recently become popular.
That's actually in, the one I was reading, it says no cargo containers allowed.
It does, okay, I think I'll have that in mind here.
Yeah.
Um, and then also, I would like, I would like, um, if you're going to talk about an PSU ADU survey, maybe you can cite your source so we can see if this is real.
Yeah, we can definitely make that available. Yeah, that's all available and we'll make sure we get it on the website.
Okay.
And, yeah, and they'd have to, any structure would have to meet our building code, so.
That's in a different section.
Yeah, but, and, and then, and then like I said, cargo containers, and that one I read is specifically no cargo containers, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I share your.
Oh, I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. My mother lives in northeast Portland and all of the homes there are built in around nineteen ten, nineteen oh five to nineteen fifteen, I think.
What neighborhood?
Uh, Grant Park.
Okay, Grant Park.
Grant Park, so that's where I grew up. The city of Portland allowed high-density, um, construction in that neighborhood and removed, uh, the off-street parking requirements. So they put up, you know, eighty condos in a building and then there was no place for them to park. And they, I think they allowed it for five to ten years.
So in front of your mother's house, right?
That's right, yeah, and so there's no place to park in these neighborhoods and it actually has made, uh, the neighborhood environment's hectic and not friendly. And, um, because nobody can find a place to park when they get off work and they're tired and they want to go home and they want to make a meal and hang out with their families. And if you can't find a place to park, I mean, that's terrible.
Right.
So we, I think we need to have some sort of, something in writing with a minimum parking requirement.
Is the state law exempt that too?
Well, it's an interesting, um, the language of the ADU requirements in the state law says that ADUs may only be subject to, help me out here, carry reasonable standards relating to citing and design. And so it is a matter of open interpretation as to whether off-street parking or owner occupancy or some of these other standards will be determined to be reasonable standards related to citing and design. And unfortunately, when DLCD issued their guidance, they did not go through a full rule-making process to say, you know, how they interpret it. So likely, I, I'm looking forward to reading the court cases. Uh, but it does mean we're a little bit on our own. I would say, you know, in, in answer to that particular scenario, I actually went to Grant High School myself, so know the neighborhood well. And we will talk about off-street parking requirements for those larger multifamily structures. I know Portland did go through that period where they were not requiring off-street parking for the larger developments. With regard to ADUs in particular, again, we're talking about one to two percent if Oregon City is astonishingly successful in, in, um, facilitating ADU development. Right now, there's twenty-three in the entire city, um, and so even if we. And so even if we doubled or tripled that, that's the last twenty years of ADU permits. So, you know, even if we saw amazing development along those lines, we're not talking about significant off-street, on-street parking impacts from ADUs specifically. We will go on and we'll talk more about parking for some of the other types, but to put the ADUs in context.
So is an internal conversion something different than an ADU?
Yeah, we will get to that and yes, it is.
There are internal conversions that are ADUs, like you converted your basement into it. But internal conversion under this is essentially your normal living space, you broke it up into two or three different places.
Four different places.
You know, that's, that's, that's kind of the difference between whether it's an ADU or an internal conversion is, did you do something different with the main living space of your house?
All right, well, thank you, thank you very much.
You got to, you got to come up to the mic, sorry.
So I have issues with seventeen twenty.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Carla Long, so I'm in Oregon City, on Roosevelt. Currently, we, you guys know what's going on in Roosevelt. And the biggest issue we have is that the fire marshal can't come in and examine it unless it's a conditional use. And particularly with these multiple dwellings, thank you. I'm concerned with the ADUs because it's a residential neighborhood that the fire marshal won't come out and examine them. And I think that's like a safety issue for neighborhoods, especially my house is the yellow one on picture here. It's technically, if, if there was ever a fire or my furnace is in the basement, my house would go to flames really fast on the old Douglas fir based on how they're built. They're wonderfully built, but I'm concerned that if we do these, that there's going to be a major fire hazard and currently the fire marshal won't go into a residential neighborhood. Is there any way to implement that in these cases if we're adding an ADU or?
Well, ADUs would have to meet building code for the ADUs, which means if it's an attached unit, it has to be fire separated and, and have, meet building code for, for fire safety, fire life and safety.
Would the fire marshal actually come out and look at it though?
Building inspector would.
Yeah, the building inspector would check that when they get the permit.
And they're versed in those issues. I mean, you don't necessarily have to have the marshal come out and look at it.
Our building permits get reviewed by the fire marshal as well. So during the building permit review process.
We have a transitional home down the road from us and so it's caused a lot of chaotic issues subtly over time. And the biggest thing is, is we're a one-lane street, we have two-hour parking on my side of the street, which has helped a lot because we have a business on the end of Malala. So removing, you know, parking restrictions is concerning. And then also, I mean, it, again, like, it's a seventeen hundred and fifty square foot home, it has up to twelve beds. I think right now it's been around six or seven people in there. But my concern is, is the wellbeing a lot, because seventeen, seventeen point twenty affects my, my street. So I'm concerned about a lot of things with that and I just wanted to share that, so.
Because of the narrowness of your street?
Yes.
It's basically passable by one car.
We usually, people park on one side, so it's, someone literally has to get off the road or almost behind a car that's parked to be able to go by.
Yeah, you have to park alternate so that you can zigzag your way through.
No, you can't park on either side of the street, yeah.
Which is great. Anyways, that's my concern, so.
Yeah, we, we have, and we have concerns about the proposed language about transitional housing in general, so.
It'd be great to, religious, religious groups would actually have, you know, restrictions just like an Oxford house. It'd be awesome, you know, just because if they're doing the same thing, they should follow rules like any other nonprofit other than a religious group.
Well, they should follow the same rules of anybody commercial who's doing something, you know, it shouldn't make a difference what their origin is, it's their intent and that's what we're, you know.
Right now, it's being commercially used, but it's not defined that way and we have, yeah, so. It's, I, I have a hard time because there was code that wasn't honored in terms of my opinion, so. Anyways, we'll just see how it goes, so.
Keep us on our toes, don't let us blank.
Thank you.
Elizabeth's got, what, thirty slides?
Thirty, this is number eight.
This is number eight.
Oh, we're doing good.
Yeah, we're not going to get through it, so where, where can we put in that we don't want any commercial uses in the ADUs or the single families or low-density residential?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, it would help to get some clarity from the commission about, are we discussing ADUs specifically? And if so, you know, what are the concerns that can be put into the recommendation for singling out ADUs or do you think that there's a need to address short-term rentals and, you know, shorter-term occupancy of any type of residential structure in these zones? So that we can better.
It needs to apply to every, everything, it needs to apply to all the residential zones that.
Yeah, it's not just an ADU issue.
Yeah, it's not an ADU issue, it's a residential.
Residential versus commercial.
All right, we can look into that, I, we'll talk some more about whether that can be integrated into this packet or if that becomes a work session, what would you call it, a work program item to develop short-term rentals?
I don't want to put on a list and put off till later.
We need to know where to put it.
It's happening illegally right now in Oregon City and we need to address it. So we can either deal with it or put the kibosh on it.
You're really talking about writing a short-term rental code?
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing, which is different from an owner occupancy or a B and B restriction.
Talking about both.
Okay.
Because there's something down the road that says here that a B and B is thirty days of occupancy or less. I don't, we'll get to that, but I don't understand the thirty days. But we can get to that.
It's because of thirty-one, a whole new set of rules coming about evictions.
I think it needs to be less than thirty days, but we can get to that when we get there. So let's go on to slide number nine.
Sure, we'll take a look at those options, but I just, I would say that cities have spent months and months developing, I mean, developing just short-term rentals and so we do want to make sure that, to the extent that we can address the issues now, but to the extent that we also are looking to get the equitable housing moved forward, we will look at the best way to combine those issues. All right, so the next issue that we, type of housing for missing metal that we're addressing tonight is townhomes, also known in the, you know, it just rolls off the tongue zoning parlance, single-family attached residential structures. So right now, those are prohibited in all of the low-density zones, there's no proposal to change that. The only zone where they're currently allowed is the R three point five zone and we're proposing to open that up to be both the R five, which we're now treating as more a medium-density zone, along with R three point five, and then also to reintroduce them into the R two zone. They'd previously been allowed in R two and then there was some concern that that was dominating the R two housing stock rather than allowing some more like true multifamily apartment in that zone. But looking at the balance of what type of housing is, you know, is underway and also factoring in, which we'll talk about in our next session, that multifamily apartment-type housing is permitted in all of the commercial and mixed-use zones, there was less concern about the R two needing to be reserved strictly for apartments. And so the idea, again, equitable housing, more options, more diversity, so adding back in townhomes as a permitted use in the R two zone.
Well, I think townhomes are the definition of high-density.
Definitely, go there.
Some people would say like Tokyo skyscrapers are the definition of high-density, but there's definitely a range.
We don't want any point towers like in Vancouver, Vancouver is.
Being somewhat facetious because that's probably not likely to happen here, but. Density is very relative.
It's going to, we got good Columbia basalt to build on.
So some of the primary changes to the townhome standards are, there's some changes to the dimensions and density standards and those will be in the base zone chapters that are now in seventeen point oh eight, seventeen ten, seventeen twelve. So you can flip to pages four and six of your packet for a handy comparison table of both of those. And the, really the overarching change is just looking at smaller minimum lot sizes for single-family attached units. And that's in recognition of the fact that when you don't have side yards required for townhomes, you simply don't need the same-size lot. And also it's just not as feasible to have such a large lot if you have to span the full width of it to connect to the, to the adjoining house, you know, for example, if you had to have a five thousand square foot lot, you know, fifty-foot wide, you could wind up with a very, you know, a fifty-foot wide townhome, you know, is, is probably structurally difficult to build and, and doesn't meet very many people's requirements. And so by then reducing the lot sizes to reflect the side setbacks, that translates into overall an increased density that's allowed for those in, just again, those R five and R three point five zones. There's no density increase proposed in R two because at two thousand square feet, that's already a pretty reasonable size.
Are we looking in the small packet or the big packet?
The small packet with the staple that you received tonight from Pete.
So page four says proposed dimensional standard?
Yes.
Page six talks about density.
Right, so the, the first line in the table of table two says minimum lot size and the second line down is single-family attached. And you can see that in comparison, the lot sizes there are about thirty, approximately thirty percent smaller than for a single-family detached or a duplex lot. And then flipping over to page six, that those smaller lot sizes translates into a different density standard for the R five and the R three point five zones. And in terms of design, one of the changes that we're proposing with this package of amendments starts on page fifteen and it's proposed chapter seventeen point sixteen for townhouses and it introduces new residential design standards to make sure that the townhomes that are at it are built to high quality and meet design to be more compatible with the neighborhoods. And one of those issues, there are all the, the design standards about facade and detailing, but that are derived from similar features that are required for single-family detached houses so that we have a similar palette of design options throughout our neighborhoods for increased compatibility. But then also looking at driveway access and parking, and this is one of the changes proposed here. Right now, the code in some places says if you have two narrow lots next to each other, you're required to share the driveway unless you get an exemption and other places in the code it says you can have separate driveways unless you're required to combine it. So the proposed default is to require combining, sharing driveways for lots that are less than twenty-five feet wide or that developments have to provide alley access. And the benefit there is that we're, to talk about some of the on-street parking opportunities, by consolidating driveways, you get more street frontage in between driveways, that means you get more on-street parking. Some of these townhome developments, by the time you get in one, you know, twelve to twenty-foot driveway per, you have no street frontage and no on-street parking, so it's really a, a direct trade-off. You get one off-street parking and you lose one on-street. So by staggering it this way, there's also greater opportunity for street trees, utility location in the public right-of-way and just really increases the pedestrian nature because you're not constantly crossing driveways. So looking to, this really falls under the amenities portion of better quality housing, of equitable housing and desirable neighborhoods. And so there's several.
Where does the property line go on the driveway?
Well, the driveway apron has to cross the parking strip area that's part of the right-of-way, but the driveway starts at the back of the sidewalk curb.
Tell it when you've got a driveway here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, that driveway, that property line, it goes down the middle.
It does.
If you were, yes.
And it's surveyed as such?
And it's surveyed as such and there are mutually beneficial access easements that are reported at the time of creation.
So are these minimums?
In which standard? About the accesses?
About accesses, about side yards, you know, again, I, you know, I can only apply this in my head to the area that I live in and I can't apply it specifically to the area like where Bob lives because River Crest is different, they have fairly large side yard setbacks. I can't, you know, I'm not foreseeing anybody coming in and, you know, ripping them down, but.
Yes, all the setbacks are proposed as minimum setbacks.
So they could be more?
Yes, they could be.
Because again, I'm thinking about the design guidelines we have that basically talk about separation. They talk about, you know, the, trying to think of what the proper word is. So you've got a pattern of development, so, you know, we don't want one house here and one house there and doing that because in the older neighborhoods, they're fairly consistent where they sit in terms of the street. And that's part of the compatibility issue. I know that the ones on South End and Lawton, I think that's, is that Lawton Road on the way to your place? Yeah, Lawton. Yeah, those are, you know, again, that's a, I consider that a multiple-family dwelling complex because it's more than one unit, all, you know, they may be separate lots, but who knows? And their side yards and things are fairly small. But again, that, that, that was a.
Or nonexistent.
Yes, that was a vacant lot.
How would you say in the past twenty-five years that the housing stock and the sludge and thereof has changed? Because when I was a kid, it was a single-family home, you know? Once in a while, it was an apartment somewhere, I grew up in Corvallis, okay? And housing was always out of demand. But you know, I mean, I'm just looking at from the overall standpoint, it seems to me like you got just a ton of choices anymore. And so, you know, it's all driven by the economics of the thing, the demand.
Right, yeah, I was just looking to see, we do have some of those statistics, I think.
Yeah.
Did you share those last time? Off the top of my head, about seventy-four percent of Oregon City housing stock is still single-family detached and the remainder is a diversity of these different types of units that we're talking about.
That's what I see, that's, that's the challenge right there. You're talking to an old duck, okay? And, man, I look out into the future and I see, what do these young people expect? What's available to them, you know? And you got a wide variety of stuff that is being, I wouldn't say foisted, but it's being foisted onto the oldest city west of the Rockies, you know, the Mississippi or somewhere back there, you know? And it's, it is going to change the character of this community. It really is going to do it and it's all driven by demand and the, the marketplace. But it's going to have an impact on this community, not the older neighborhoods, you know, they're going to last for a few more years. It's, it's the outlying stuff. So this is where I'm really trying to be as objective as I can, but I'm still holding my breath doing it, you know?
I mean, I think that we're all trying to meet that balance of changes are coming and how do we facilitate it? Certainly the goal of this code amendment, we like to imagine, you know, that planning has a role in shaping the city's future, but it certainly is not a prescription for anything by permitting these uses. You know, again, to go back to the first slide, we're not prohibiting single-family detached. And so long as there's a demand for that and there's land and developers want to continue to build that and households want to continue to buy that, that remains a viable option. And nothing in these amendments takes away from that. And we're really just looking, you know, I think again, the other demographic slide that I believe you talked about last, last time. So that our households really are changing and that the, you know, we've got shrinking household sizes, we have a lot of aging in place coming, a silver tsunami of aging baby boomers looking for a variety of housing units. You know, the millennial generation that has different preferences and smaller household sizes, fewer children. And so just trying to get that right fit and really this project is all about opening up opportunities and seeing where that demand leads so that the next generation has opportunities too.
Well, I still think the best kept secret in Oregon is Oregon City.
Let's keep it.
And see, that's, that's the problem, let's keep it the way it is.
No, I said, let's keep the secret.
No, but I, I do think that you're right, I, I think that, I look at this a little differently and I'm probably going to have, let you know how I feel about this, but I think the two key options for affordable housing are preserving older housing stock and then supporting new housing. So I think we need to talk about some of the mechanisms that we need to put in place like system development charge waivers and deferral for new multi-unit housing. But then also charging full SDCs to people that are demolishing older housing and taking it out of the, and taking it out of the affordable stock. Because that's one of the biggest problems that I see is. Is all of the, all of the older affordable housing stock is getting demolished and these are all really nice units, but I don't see them being affordable. I don't see, I, I don't see, in this whole effort, I don't see how the end user is benefiting. And I need to, and I need to, I'm gonna, in order to get my support for this, I'm going to have to see that in this process. In some way, and, and so there's a bunch of other stuff, you know, like property tax exemptions and urban renewal capital project funds and city housing bond measures and all sorts of other stuff. stuff, you know, mechanism-wise, that need to be incorporated into this whole effort other than just design guidelines. So that's, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more, but that's kind of, that's the position I'm taking on this in terms of affordable housing, I guess.
So until those financial components are part of your packet, you wouldn't look at these zoning?
I'll be happy to, yeah, but I mean, I'm just, I, I know that there's-
Yeah.
And I, I'm, I'm happy to look at the zoning, but I'm just hoping that there is, there's more.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm hoping this isn't all there is, that's, sorry, but I just, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd say, you know, in this round, the specifics of the Metro grant that the city received was to specifically support the zoning code amendments as a piece of that bigger strategy.
Right, right, but I mean, I want to see that as a part of this piece. I don't want to, I don't want to hear that we're going to do this later because we never do.
We never have.
Sorry, but that's just-
Or we do it, but it's now disjointed because-
At the same time, yeah, I mean, I don't want anybody to lose a grant or, or, you know, follow a process that you guys are in trying to get this done, I don't want to do that, but.
Pete, was there a specific requirement by Metro to implement this at this time?
There is a schedule and an IGA and it would have to be renegotiated with Metro if that were the case.
Well, I mean, is Metro dictating?
This grant, so this project is from Metro.
Because, you know, the property tax exemptions, they have, they have like an up to 10-year thing for multi-unit projects that meet certain rent targets and that's, that's a, that's a house bill, 2377. So I know that Metro has those things in mind when, when we're looking at alternative or affordable housing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is a question of bringing the other departments along.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Right, well, I think this is a city-wide process, it's, it's, it's something that is not just achieved through zoning.
You know, when we, when we say comprehensive plan, that's what we, that's what we mean.
Yeah, I don't think we can zone our way into, into doing this. If we're not going to do an alternative housing analysis or any of those other kinds of things that we should be doing, we should at least be looking at some of these alternative ways by which we fund this stuff.
We've been told it's coming later and like Damon just said, it is disjointed. I, like I said, the whole problem I have with this is number one, it's not tailored to Oregon City at all, it's so generic, it could apply to any place, anywhere, and number two, we don't have background data to help us make the determination about where this is appropriate. And I just, I'm going to keep beating that dead horse because it's going to be dead. We don't have the housing needs analysis that we need to do this and I'm having, that's why I'm having heartburn about this.
Well-
I don't disagree with what we're doing, I just disagree with the timing.
Yeah, well, I think the issue is no, no. I mean, housing needs analysis will help, you know, cement with more clarity where, with, which options are more appropriate, but I think as far as affordability and what is out there, we're part of a regional housing market.
I know, but without any incentives, this is just thrown to the wind to the market and we already know what we're getting from the market. It's like you said about the houses being torn down, we're getting Renaissance-type, not in Oregon City, but in the Portland metro, we're getting Renaissance, they're tearing down small houses that people could afford to get into and building these jihugic houses with the, you know, I'm not picking on you Renaissance homes if you're watching this, but that's basically the type of housing that we're getting in Portland. Again, I don't want, I don't want to Portland-ize this town, we need to make all of this appropriate to Oregon City and nobody who's been hired to do this has answered my question. And I've been thinking about this for months, how can we make this more appropriate for Oregon City?
Well, and part of that requires us to have a comprehensive view of what Oregon City is going to be in 2050 or whatever. You know, do we want to have seventy-four percent still be the magic number for single-family housing or do we want it to drop to sixty percent and fifteen percent townhomes and thirty-two percent ADUs or whatever?
I agree, but it isn't going to happen through zoning.
Right, no, I-
Zoning is not, not the round hole we're trying to shove into the square peg, that's the problem, it isn't going to happen.
It's a component of it.
It's part of it, it's part of the picture.
Right, no.
Right now, we're doing, we're doing this process very piecemeal, that's, that's what I'm having complete heartburn about.
And I, and I would say that zoning is really about unlocking those possibilities so that they're on the table and then refining from there. Incentives are a great tool when you say, great, now we have these opportunities, how can we make sure that, you know, if we've decided this particular project needs, you know, a specific type of housing is more needed in one neighborhood or another, financial incentives can be a great tool for helping it move forward.
My problem is I keep hearing there are more tools in the toolbox, but maybe Oregon City says, we don't want any damn metric tools. You know, you can have all the 316s you want, but there's not going to be any metric in our toolbox. And we don't have, you know, I don't have a way to eliminate certain things and say that, that, you know, this neighborhood shouldn't have this or this neighborhood is ideal for this. Or, you know, we shouldn't have any of this. And, and we don't have that to wait for the inventory, you know?
And have we asked those neighborhoods, have we asked Rivercrest if this is appropriate for their neighborhood? Have we asked Hillendale? Have we asked Berkeley Hills? Have we asked Gaffney Lane? No, we have not asked them.
Shouldn't them come in here when we go to the CIC or out to their neighborhood associations?
We need to go and talk to them about it.
One at a time, each of those neighborhood associations.
Well, and, and, and at the same time, give them a reality check.
Exactly.
That they're not going to push a button and it will be Berkeley Hills in 1985 and it will never move, you know? But, you know, they should say, look, you know, like, like I was saying, in Oregon, you know, by where I live, there's single-family houses and then there's this block of townhomes. It isn't even a whole block, it's one tax lot. And that is a sore thumb. Now, if they had done like the entire block, then, you know, maybe it wouldn't look so, but it's just suddenly there's these four little tiny narrow homes and then there's right next to it a house with like three times the house's size in yard. And, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but it needs to be, you know, townhomes belong together, they don't belong as, you know, one and then 800 little houses and then, you know, I grew up next to, you know, all single-family residential and an apartment complex of 15 surrounded by single-family residential. And not on a bus line or anything, it's just the guy was able to buy two tax lots and he put an apartment building up. You know, we-
It didn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, I know we're, we're looking at code right now, but there are some comprehensive plan policies that we're going to be sharing with you when we win at the hearing process in Goal 10, which have been in there for a long time that speak directly to the need for this type of policy change city-wide.
Can we talk about it before we have a hearing?
Yes.
I don't really want to talk about it at a hearing, I'd like to talk about Goal 10 in a, in a work session.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not part of this presentation, but we can do it, we can do it.
It's fine.
We can work in an overview of that for sure.
Yep.
Okay, but if you would just indulge me, dealing with a little bit of code for this evening.
We may not get there, Elizabeth, so you're, to understand, these, we like to talk and we like to talk things out, so I apologize if you're not getting through your presentation, that's just the way it's going to have to be.
It's not on you, it's on us.
It's, it's on us. If we're not comfortable-
And thank you for cracking the web and keeping us going.
And we're, if we're not comfortable, we're not going to move forward. I, it doesn't matter how many slides you have, we're just not going to go there, we just don't feel comfortable.
I understand your voicing concerns and it's good, but, you know.
Click the button.
Houston, we have a problem.
Let's get going, let's, let's, let's try to, let's go to the next slide.
We did that last time and, and I walked out of here.
Fuming.
Yes.
Well, that may happen again, but let's try to-
Okay, so let's talk about a new proposed use, which really is a way of legitimizing an existing use, which is manufactured home parks. There are currently three parks in existing city limits and an additional one within the UGB. And right now, they're not a permitted use in any of the existing zones, which leaves them in sort of a zoning limbo, makes it very difficult for those existing parks to, you know, remodel, make changes, add or remove units. And so we have a very active park owner here who has wanted, you know, just case in point, has wanted to make some improvements to his park and hasn't been able to because he's stuck in non-conforming use territory. So the proposal is to address this, this form of housing that's already in the city, there's over 400 units, there's sort of a built-in affordable housing stock, there are certainly concerns about the house versus tenancy and rental of, of the pads. However, they already exist and are already providing homes for over 400 households now. And so the proposal is to make them an existing use in the R three point five zone. And you can find the park proposals on the last page, on page 37 and 38, the last page of your packet. And you might think that these look a little bit short on detail, given that, you know, we're regulating a large number of units and somewhat akin to, say, a subdivision or a master plan. However, what's most important to understand about the manufactured home park standards is there are very detailed state-level requirements for manufactured home parks under the building code and all manufactured home parks have to meet those standards. And so we went through some exercises about, you know, did it make sense to duplicate a lot of those standards in the code or set a higher bar in Oregon City? And from a logistical point of view, it made more sense to simply defer to the state code instead of trying to constantly keep the local code up to date with that state code. It just creates opportunities for conflicting standards. And so rather than, than set that ongoing potential for conflict, we've set some general standards here that address issues that are either not addressed in the state code or that we felt a local standard was more appropriate. And then the remainder of these issues are addressed in the state code.
So if somebody was trying to find this, they would have to go to the ORS or is there, is it somewhere that somebody in the Oregon City area could look it up in, in our code?
We can put a cross-reference into it.
Well, no, I mean, is it?
The full code is not adopted in Oregon City code anywhere, you know?
I mean, could somebody find this without going to the OAR?
It would depend on their research skills, but we could, that's what I'm saying, we could add a cross-reference in here that would make it easier to, to find.
That would be very helpful.
Do the three that already exist, are they in three point five?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so we're just saying, yes, you're permitted where you, where you exist, so we're not going to like rezone them to three point five?
No, there's no, no rezoning.
Three point five with an asterisk personally, but we should have a manufactured park dwelling zone.
And that was one option.
I have to clear down my three, three houses and put a manufactured.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I'd have to go get a new zoning if we had that, but now I can just do it.
Yeah, well, so one, so another piece here is in drafting these codes, these codes, it's certainly been an iterative process. And so we now have this opportunity for a more holistic review, that's in part where we're looking for planning commission feedback. But we had initially proposed a new standard for individual manufactured homes, if you were going to propose, you know, you have a, just a single-family lot and possibly not a subdivision where the CCNRs could restrict you, but, you know, just a standard lot outside of the historic district, currently zoning would allow you to place a manufactured home. And so the proposal was to add some particular development standards for manufactured homes to increase their compatibility with surrounding neighborhood.
I don't think-
This is a standard feature in some other codes, Oregon City does not currently have this in the code and to the extent, you know, I don't have a good grasp on the prevalence of individual manufactured homes outside of the parks, the data that I have had available just really doesn't capture that in detail. And so I'm not, thinking back again from the equitable housing perspective, we've proposed this, we've reviewed it, there is some sense that these standards could work, but in terms of barriers and, you know, I think that there's a question to be asked is, are we solving a problem that doesn't exist? Is this a solution to a question no one's, no one's asked yet? Is this, are these type of standards necessary? Should we add them and add a new layer of review to the code or do they, do they not need to be in the code?
I don't think they need to be in there because the vast majority of people that would replace a single-family house and all, you know, the house next to me before it got bought and renovated was, I, I'm surprised they renovated and just didn't throw a road flare in there. But my thought was, was that I would buy it, level the land and, and throw a manufactured home on it. But it wouldn't be, you know, like your picture of a manufactured, it's the ones, you know, they have now, which are double and triple wides, they're, they're a house, it just happens to be built in a different location.
Correct.
And I think that's 99% of what people would put, I don't think anybody would pull a trailer out of a trailer park and put it, you know, I just don't see that happen.
They're hard, they're very hard to move.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
You know, there is one on Lynn Avenue that, that's, and then there's one off of Lollala. You can see it if you drive down Lollala Avenue, kind of near where the social security office is and you can totally tell it's a manufactured home because of the way they cited it on the lot.
Yeah, but it's such an exception, I, I just, I don't see the city devolving into lots of single-family manufactured home neighborhoods or whatever.
And all the new ones are going to be to those standards.
Yeah.
It is very difficult to move an older one onto an existing one.
Unless they do it in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Although if you look at the Resolution for Architecture website, they have houses that are very modern and have the same shape, angular shapes and they're prefabbed and you can have one or you can have two or, you know, they can match all sorts of different styles.
Deserties to the old, you know, real manufacturer homes almost look like Frank Lloyd Wrights, depending on what you put on the fronts, so.
All right, so the next use type to talk about for Missing Middle is the corner duplex. And a corner duplex is, you know, what they, I've also heard the phrase discreet density, a way to introduce some additional housing units that are character-compatible with existing neighborhoods. So corner duplexes are proposed in the R10, R8 and R6 low-density zones, the idea being that there, it is a duplex, but by having two street-facing facades, that from either individual street, it appears the same, compatible with surrounding single-family homes and, you know, blends in with the neighborhood.
I just have to keep the post.
With their roof like that one, that one you have that picture that looks like a ranch-style house on that says three and four, that, no, the other, the one in the middle there, that one's like, I know that's not in Oregon City, so.
Right, well, so the one in the middle there for duplexes, that would not qualify as a corner duplex because it doesn't-
Has the same street facade.
Right, both units are oriented to the same, to the same street facade and one would have to be oriented to, to both corners.
Is there an off-street parking requirement for that, those?
There's currently no off-street parking requirement in the Oregon City code for any single-family or duplex units. So what is included in the corner duplex standards, the dimensions are covered in the new, in 1708, page four, and the standards, the dimensional standards for corner duplex lots are identical to standards for a single-family detached home. And, let's see, oh, and the design elements start on page 11 in proposed 1714060. So the main thing to point out there is that, let's see, did I get the page 11? Did I run? All right, so there's a new code section, 1714060, that specifically addresses corner duplexes, provides some flexibility if the units are side-by-side or they could be one over the other, that can also help with aging in place because the first floor can be all ADA accessible. And we had some discussion at PAT about the entrances, while the, while each facade on the corner has to be designed to meet the same facade detailing requirements as a single-family home, there, there was discussion about allowing the entrances. Originally, the proposal was to have one entrance on both facades and there's, the proposal was to make sure that one entrance was visible from the street, but allow some flexibility for that second entrance, say it could be even located around the back, that would even make it more discreet and less pronounced as a duplex. So there would be more flexibility as to where that second entrance is located. There are some additional compatibility standards to make sure those two units really blend together and, and have a similar look. And these are written, you know, with as clear and objective of, as language as we came up with, so many of the standards are, you must be the same or within a certain number of feet or must match in proportion, so pretty straightforward standards intended for that. And then the question, one question for your concern about corner duplexes and duplexes, it, it's partially a semantic issue and partially a design issue about corner duplexes per se are proposed in R10, R8 and R6. When we get into R5, R3.5 and R2- When we get into R five, R three point five, and R two, regular duplexes on any lot are permitted. They're already permitted in those zones. Or, well, they're already permitted in R three point five and are proposed to be expanded to R five and R two as well. And so the question is, could a regular duplex be located on a corner lot in those zones? Or should we hold any corner lot in the R five, R three point five, and R two zone also to these corner duplex standards rather than the standard mid-block duplex standards that could be more like the option there where both entrances and both facades are only oriented to a single street?
I want to bring up an issue that, that is associated with this. And this is off-street parking and its relationship to, to public safety and side distance clearance coming out of a driveway. And also the impact that it has with cars parked on both sides of the street and the safe movement of traffic on that street because we don't require off-street parking. And we've, we've just gone nuts on traffic safety around here and traffic movement and volume. But when it comes to off-street parking, that's directly related, I think, to, to the traffic issue, movement of vehicles, movement of volume. And it bothers me a little bit when I get into these neighborhoods and the street goes like this because you got, you know, you don't have any off-street parking. It's all on-street if you're lucky enough to park in front of your house. So I, I think we ought to really be, be aware of that, that we ought to require that these residences have off-street parking.
Well, that one of those newer developments that got approved in the last five years, I was down on one of them. You couldn't even get through the street. People had large things parked on the street. You got basically one car. And so up in the area where Vern lives, and I was just like, really?
Well, this is the, this is the effect of unintended consequences. And we really ought to pay attention to that because it just takes one really bad accident or an emergency vehicle trying to get through. You know, when somebody's had a heart attack or something like that, they just, they end up going across lawns, you know, really.
It's the kids coming out between parked cars, it's usually.
Yeah, yeah. And they always do, you know, they got the proverbial basketball, you know, up there. And some kids.
Talk happened in my neighborhood.
It did?
Multiple times.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think that we ought to require off-street parking.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you, at least, at least one space.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I agree just because, and, you know, you should be able to park your car in front of your house, one way or another. But the other side of that is, all the studies show that narrow streets slow traffic. And so if you've got to pay attention as you're threading your way down the thing, you're not doing forty-five. You can potentially stop before the kid darts out in front of them. So it's one of those, but, you know, and, and when you get into multifamily and duplexes and stuff, you know, you're probably only talking about one car. But, you know, the other one, if they do have two, then it might be out on the street. But, you know, it's kind of a, personally, I think everybody should be, leave it to Bieber with their two-car garage and, you know, and it's full of crap and they have their two cars parked in the driveway. But.
What I find a little bit objectionable is the new standard now is allowing people to use on-street parking to count as their off-street parking. And I, I'm having a really hard time with that.
And that's a publicly-owned right-of-way.
Exactly.
You're asking the public to forgive you.
Yeah. Back to this. And your question about, do we make corner duplexes always be corner duplexes?
I think where it's appropriate, we should. Where it's not, we don't.
Well, and that, and that's what her question is, is on R five, three and a half, and two, do we require?
It's not three, it's R five to R two.
Yeah, R five, R three point five, and R two, R three and a half. So anyway.
Why should I say that?
It's the, it's the.
Well, R three point five is not between R five and R two.
Really? Where does five and three point five?
Three point five, R five, R two.
No.
The reference is intended to encompass R five, R three point five, and R two.
I understand what you're saying because they're set up in different groups. But, and there is, numerically, but anyway. I, I don't think there's a necessity for requiring corner lots, especially in three point five and two. And five hasn't been built yet, so we might as well let them do it. We're talking about tiny spaces. And I would rather not force them to L the building and let them have decent backyards. You know, that they can throw a ball, that they can do whatever and not have, well, your backyard and my backyard are fighting with each other, and I'm not gonna let you throw your frisbee or whatever. It's like, there's the building and there's, you know, the fence or the property line. And, you know, let them have, I mean, that's the biggest problem in these smaller ones is no yards. So I don't think we should cramp their yard by forcing the building to keep them. And then they don't buy a place with a yard. But when you're starting out, you know.
Well, get back to my question, what are we trying to achieve and what's it gonna take to get there?
Money?
And we don't have any.
Of course.
So anyway, that's my recommendation is that we don't require corner lots. If they want to build them, that's fine. But I don't think it should be a requirement on these smaller lots.
Any other thoughts on that before we move to the next item?
I don't think it should be a requirement.
Okay. So looking at more traditional duplex style on any lot, those would be permitted in the R five, R three point five, and R two zones. Currently, they're only allowed in R three point five. But in the spirit of equitable housing and expanding diversity of housing types, we're proposing to expand them. As eloquently noted, R five doesn't exist yet. So there's some flexibility in how we envision it and, and shape its future. So the standards proposed for duplexes are largely derived from current existing standards. So the dimensions are in seventeen ten and seventeen twelve. So the table two that we looked at previously, and just like corner duplexes, the same lot sizes and setbacks apply to duplexes as would apply to a single-family detached. And the density, or the design standards are, start on page nine. And they, the way that the design standards are currently written, single-family and duplex structures are subject to the same design requirements. And so we brought along that structure to the code. And it essentially is a menu of options. So a certain number of design features, design elements are called in section seventeen fourteen oh forty on page ten that are required to be part of the street-facing facade for a duplex. And so again, another PAT discussion that we had here was about the street-facing entry. And so looking at, you know, you sometimes have a duplex like this with two street-facing entries. There are other duplexes that are essentially oriented ninety degrees. I lived in one myself. And so the requirement there is that only, only a minimum of one entrance needs to be street-facing so that you create that vitality in connection to the street, similar to a single-family detached residential. But to provide more flexibility in how the units are oriented, only one needs to be oriented to the street, not necessarily two.
So I thought we had a requirement, Pete, that we weren't, we weren't, encouraging snout-house development. And this basic, this example is basically snout-house development.
Currently, we regulate how many architectural features you have to put on the front of the house if it projects. This one actually is in line with the wall of the living area, so.
But it's basically got.
It's not, we wouldn't consider this a snout-house.
You basically, first thing you see is the garage.
But it's got garage, it's got a porch element, it's got, you know, balconies. It's got, that would meet current residential design standards.
But it's not really a real balcony.
Well, I don't even think this is a real house.
I don't, that could help, that would help if it's not a real house.
It's, it's a model.
Well, I mean, my question is, where would the other entrance be if it's a mid-block duplex?
If this was rotated ninety degrees and you had, it wouldn't be exactly like this. But if one unit is on the street-facing, and so that door is facing onto the street, but then the second unit, the door might be facing to the side lot.
So you're talking about a corner duplex?
If it's mid-block, it would be facing an interior sideline. So it could just be, you know, like there's a pedestrian walkway that leads back to that entrance.
So just, just because you stick the door on the side and you have to walk around further in the rain? Yeah, no, I.
There's no front door to that unit.
There's just a side door and a back door, but not a front door, which is silly.
Well, I mean, I think that it comes down to balancing compatibility. So in this case, you know, we often think of front doors as increasing compatibility because it's that interaction with the street. This is very clearly a duplex, right? In the sense that you see both doors straight, you know, straight on, whether you like the appearance of those, you know, entrances balanced against the garages or not. An alternative, you know, imagine if you chop this in half, take one of those units and push it behind, you would only see one unit from the street. And then that person, you know, the people that live in the back, you know, again, I lived in the back unit of one of these. So, I mean, just saying, not, not to say that it's the best kind, but just that, you know, it, it has been done. Whether you want it in your community or not is a, is a great question. But the balance is, you know, it's simply a side door to the, to the second unit.
Yeah. I think we know which one's the low-income unit. That's what I consult.
At least they have one, that's.
Yeah.
You know, I look at something like this and I look at it in terms of, does it make any difference in the function of a city? Does it make any difference? And the answer to that is no. You know, if you want variety, let them have variety. Don't over, over-standardize it.
Yeah. I mean, if somebody wants to build a weird house, they can build a weird house. I'm not gonna require them to put both doors in the front.
Well, you don't want to use zoning as a means to, you know, control every breath you take. For goodness gracious.
All right. So the question here is the same that we discussed earlier about corner duplexes, so.
We answered that one already.
Yep. I think we can move on to internal conversions. And so internal conversions certainly overlap with some of the other types that we've talked about. They really come to us sort of out of a legacy of historic preservation. The idea is, we've talked about, about reusing existing structures, incentivizing their reuse rather than tearing those structures down and replacing with, you know, newer, larger, potentially different structures. And so internal conversions are proposed as a way to use existing homes that are at least twenty years old. So that, again, we're getting at preserving existing ones rather than, you know, creating a loophole to transform an existing development. I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. Creating a loophole that would, you know, incentivize building something today as a single-family home just in order to convert the next day. And so this is our proposed to be permitted in every zone with single-family detached residential as a permitted use. So R tens, all the low-density and medium-density zones.
And I think there's an error on this slide. Yeah, it's not currently permitted in any zone. So the bottom bar there should be red.
My concern is the allowing up to four units.
Right.
Because if it's an internal conversion, then you're not adding any off-street parking. You're adding four more cars to the street, potentially. So.
Why don't we just say maximum of two?
Yeah. I, I think, you know, being able to split a house, especially when I think of the houses we have now, most of them, I don't think would work more than two anyway. So I just, you know, and if somebody wants to come in for, you know, I've got the perfect three, then they would be the exception and we would look at it. But I think two is, you know, splitting a house is enough density, you know, especially in some of the smaller places where we're already fighting with streets.
Yeah, sure. And I think that was very much a PAT discussion. And so some factors to consider in shaping your recommendation on that is that two is really the most likely for all those reasons you mentioned, just the size, you know, the existing housing stock, also the way that building codes apply. You know, we heard some concerns about fire and life safety. And there are different codes that kick in if you have one to two units versus if you have three or more units. So the, once you hit three or more, you're meeting much more stringent fire and life safety requirements in terms of fire separation. You normally trigger sprinklering, which can be cost-prohibited. Cost prohibitive, sorry, it's getting late, to add more than two units. So two is certainly the most likely. And so in shaping this, you know, then the obvious question is, why would we even permit four? And I think the, the idea is simply that we're creating that possibility for that one really cool structure that could be converted to three or four. And if, you know, right now, if we didn't allow that through this, there simply wouldn't be an option for that. So.
We can apply for a variance. Our recommendation is we'd like this changed to two.
Can I add, can I, you know, I'm sorry. One of the things that I think about internal conversions is, internal conversions is the only way to change the economics of the demolition crisis. If we can make the options for reusing the existing structure as varied and as potentially lucrative as building a new duplex or building a new fourplex, that's the only way you can turn the tide. So in my mind, when you think about incentives to counter the demolition crisis, I think incentivizing internal conversions, I appreciate the parking, but in my mind, we, I, I would much rather see a fourplex in an existing house than a new fourplex.
Makes sense.
So, sorry to interrupt.
But, but they could also play the ADU internal conversion game.
That's still, that actually is addressed in the code. And it's a maximum of four, whether they're internal or if you have an ADU, that counts against your four.
Right. So, I mean.
Well, potentially, they could have three units. If they converted it to two, I think that still provides an option. And that's.
And we're definitely looking for the consensus planning commission recommendation tonight. So would be happy to hear from everyone.
Well, here again, are we increasing the density without, and even, you mentioned compatibility with the neighborhood a while back, and I understand that. And, but are we increasing density without the benefit of a zone change in a, in a public hearing? In effect.
De facto?
Yeah, yeah. And that's what's concerned me throughout this whole thing. Now, I'm, I'm in favor of modifying our code to allow a little bit more streamlined process and, and approach to, to gaining affordability and mobility in our housing standards. But at what cost are we doing it? Are we throwing away the zone change process and land use process from one change to another without including the public by allowing these to be allowed uses in that zone? That's, that's what concerns me a little bit. And is it going to have any impact on the function of the city? You see, that's basically where I come from. How does the city function land-use-wise? And what impact does it have on people? You see, and that, and that's a, that's a, it's a hard question to answer, you know? I don't know the answer to it, but I, I'm raising the question.
If the public fully understood what the impact was, they would be here. But, you know, we.
You see, I'm here.
No, we had a lovely, we had a lovely open house, but people don't get off to work until five o'clock, and four to six is.
And there weren't that many people.
I mean, I'm glad the people that came, came. But again, more outreach is needed.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think.
I think having three units, two internal and one ADU, if they can do it, is.
Yeah. I think that's the way to do it, is two and not have ADUs count.
Well, I think the ADU does count still.
Well, yeah, either three and ADUs count or two and ADUs don't count because you can only have one more ADU. But it, but it could be an internal or an external ADU, you know? And it would still count against them.
Yeah. I guess the operative word here is maximum. And so not every time, we're not gonna have four units every single time.
Right.
And there's gonna be places where four units might be appropriate. And there's gonna be places where three units or two units are appropriate.
But if the three units or four units is the exception, then they can come in and ask for an exception. I don't want to make the exception for everybody because it's not appropriate.
Well, I mean, the, but the, but the whole idea of preserving existing housing. Well, I mean, the, but the, but the whole idea of preserving existing housing stock is very appetizing for me. And so if, if this is an incentive that can get us there, that's, that's something that.
Well, again, that's, that's what's happening in Portland.
Yeah.
Actually, to clarify, Portland doesn't have a standard like this right now, uh, outside of, I believe only the historic districts have this opportunity right now. Um, again, it comes out of his, I feel like I'm talking over you, Carrie, since this is your area of expertise, so correct me at any point. But I believe that's the only way that it's applied in the city of Portland right now.
It's part of RIPS.
Okay.
The current RIPS proposal, I believe, is to allow four units.
They don't know what that, they don't know what that is, Carrie.
Uh, residential infill project, which is the middle housing project that the city of Portland is going through right now. Um, and the other incentives that they're offering, I mean, that is part of the proposal, you know, I mean, it's a moving target. So, um, are no off-street parking requirements for internal conversions. Again, one of this ideas, the public will give away some of their street in order to encourage the preservation of existing structures.
Well said, the public won't give away.
I wish we had a street to give away.
So that's part of the, that's part of the package, SDC waivers, expedited review. Um, they're working on a building code appeal to change the, um.
Yes, thanks.
Firewall requirements so that the three, the three to four unit, um, conversions don't trigger that multifamily requirement. Because it's not just firewalls and sprinklering, it's noise, you know, you'd have to get rid of all the wood floors because of the noise. Um, so anyway, there's a, there.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I, I think it's a really important thing and I'm with Fisher Espe on that, but I'm not.
I mean, I mean, to me, it gets back to the package. Like you said, I don't want to see them tear down a 1950s mansion or whatever 1950s is, um, to put, you know, a duplex or a fourplex in. But I think just saying you can have four units isn't necessarily the only incentive that we can give them to not tear it down. We can, you know, they can come in for a variance and, um, you know, maybe the other thing is that we freeze their property taxes as a single-family dwelling for 10 years. You know, I mean, that's, that's another economic incentive that would get them to convert rather than, than scrape and rape, as they call it in some places. So, you know, I think, you know, I think that's the, you know, and I think two or three is a reasonable number. And if they want to go to four or five, then they come in and ask for a variance and say, look, we can do this and it will make sense. And we can have five doors in this building and whatever the case is. I mean, we're not prohibiting it, we're just saying you gotta do a little extra, but there's incentive and it's economic. And I'm not necessarily good with giving up public parking, but, so. So, I mean, I don't think we got to a consensus, but.
Waiting for Tom and Vern.
Well, the one, the one thing that we've been talking about and Carrie mentioned giveaway public parking. I guess I wouldn't necessarily call it public park, giving away public parking, but it is a compromise. We can't have both, more dense housing, which we're trying to do, more affordable housing, which we're trying to accomplish with some of these smaller units and mix and match. But the other thing that we have to give up to get this more density, more housing, we've got to decide if we're going to stay with these cars for the next hundred years. Are, are we going to have to look at a trade-off of one, you know, one car seems natural. Everybody's going to want one per household almost. But when you're retired and, and all of that, you probably don't need two. You, if you get good mass transit, TRIMET, use that and that solves your parking problem that we've been bumping our heads against for a long time tonight. I don't think we can have both, more density and style of houses and more on-street parking. It, it probably doesn't fit, in my opinion.
So how do you think this looks in, in your neighborhood, Rivercrest? Can you see corner duplexes? And I mean, you hardly have any curves in some areas of Rivercrest or sidewalks.
From a practical point of view, Rivercrest is built out, was a pretty nice home, so I don't see any deterioration of home.
What about ADUs?
Uh, well.
You know, it's, it's a, it's. That's a, it's an emotional thing with, with a lot of.
They've got big lots, there's 10,000 square foot lots in Rivercrest.
Yeah, yeah.
And some big, some big houses.
Plenty of room for ADUs.
And I'm looking a way, I'm looking a way to, to, to get rid of that backyard so I don't have to mow it.
But you could put an ADU on.
I could, right, and grandma would move in and, and, and grandkids.
Tom is suggesting some goats.
And a couple of stray dogs and what have you, but, uh.
Well, they would conflict with the goats.
Every neighborhood's different, every neighborhood's got its values.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to get from you, you know, I'm thinking of the people I know in Rivercrest and I think a few of them would might, if they knew they could afford to build an ADU, probably would build an ADU.
Yeah, and you, if, if they could afford, you know, and having the, the area to do it. But to answer your question directly, I, I don't, I don't see it, I don't really see it.
What about your area, Vern?
Well, there's, there's not much land left in Tower Vista, I don't think, that's available for development. So, and it's fairly, there's some older housing areas.
Could you get some eighty, could you get an ADU in there?
Oh, yeah, ADUs can go in on quite a few if they are 10 lots. And most of Tower Vista is coming up, I haven't counted them or anything, but the majority is newer developments in the last 20 years. So they would typically have larger lots. So it may not be me or my next-door neighbor that wants an ADU, but the next owner certainly has the space to put in ADUs. Who that is and when they come and when I leave and all of that, it, it's potential down the road.
You know, the general public at large expects from us, the planning commission and the city, to do one essential service. And that is to protect my property values. I've always said it, that a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood is the most delicate and, and vulnerable zoning that we have. And these people who go in there and they'll invest $500,000 on a house or $350,000. The last thing they expect is for us to allow the nuclear waste facility next door or the overhead sewer facility through their living room. They want their property values protected through zoning, they expect that, okay? You put a face on it and then it, it starts to add up. The other thing is they want the community to function. They want the police car to get there on time, the fire department to get there on time, the water to turn on and all that. That's called function, everything to be safe and, and the, the streets without potholes. That's essentially the, the, what they're expecting from us. What we're doing here. Goes way beyond that.
So you're saying we're, our, our main, one of our main responsibilities is to be responsive to the community?
Well, yeah, I think that's primarily, uh, that, but I think that what are our responsibilities is to, is to protect those neighborhoods and to keep our streets safe. I wrestle with that all the time and, you know, am I doing the right thing? Am I looking at it from a, from the point of view of the developer? Who's got a right for his property to be developed according to our standards? And are those standards realistic? Well, Damon says a reality check. Well, this is a reality check for, for, for all of us, because what we're doing is, is putting standards together here for the next 10, 15, 20 years. And, and that's, that's still, that's not for the faint-hearted, you know, when you start looking at the responsibility that, that comes with that. Uh, I hate to be the preacher here, but, uh, that's what it boils down to. That's what people expect from this planning commission. Do what you have to do, but for God's sakes, protect my property rights, you know, protect my, my neighborhood. And, um, I'm coming down on the, on the side of approving most of what I hear. And I'm, I'm gaining a little information from what I hear from you people and they're all good comments. But we're proceeding here on a, on a pretty cautious scale, you know, and I agree with what, what Paul has. It's just a piece of the puzzle and, and to really, really tackle this thing, you know, would, would take a lot of elements of, of, of study and review and standards and, and ordinances to really have a comprehensive, um, program for housing. Uh, and, and I'm the last guy that understands all the, all the issues in housing, believe me, I'm trying to absorb this stuff. But I'm, I'm, I'm being kind of fundamental here on this and, 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 and.
Well, I'm going to jump in because.
Go ahead.
He's next.
Yeah.
I've been listening to everybody really intently. I consider myself very lucky that I live in an HOA that wouldn't allow ADUs at all. And, and our area, it's all 10,000 square foot lots like yours. I wouldn't want to put somebody else on my property. If anything, I want to, now that, that Park Place concept plan's coming through, I'd rather move further out, Estacade or any place where I have more privacy, so putting someone right next to me. I've never approved a density, I've never approved a metro pushing density on any city. I really don't think that this is going to give anybody affordable housing. I think if anything, once they divide their houses, they're going to charge just as much because they're going to pay for their taxes and everything else. Um, as I've said recently to somebody, I went up to look at the whole homes, the new homes, they're starting at $469,000 going up to $614,000. So with those prices, and they don't put the prices on the sheets because they said they're subject to change as property values go up. So I look at that and I look at somebody dividing their properties up and all this ADU stuff. And I keep thinking, these people are going to divide up and add all this stuff, but they're still going to charge a lot of money for that property right there. And I just don't see that as a, a solution for density. Um, I, I've seen some of the cottage homes and other concepts that might do that, but I can't see breaking up some nice homes and putting, squeezing properties on them. I was just over this last weekend in Hawthorne district and I could not believe how hard it was to get through the streets and how crammed in everything looked. And I don't think we'll ever, you've mentioned something, Vern, about, um, most people got to downsize cars. Well, you know, as we retire, we acquire more cars. I'm now on a two, two of us in the household, we have five cars. And two motorcycles. But I, I think that as you retire, you have more money to do those kind of things because you enjoy, this one's for pleasure, this one's for work, this one's for camping.
This one's for transporting bodies.
Huh?
I'm getting rid of it all.
I, I keep adding, but the point of, of that is that I don't think TRIMET's ever going to come up and down Holcomb or come up and down this street or that street. Um, and we're not going to be riding bicycles up and down the hills in Oregon City, they may in Portland where it's flatter, but I don't think we're going to see that here. So I don't think that cutting down the amount of cars we have or all these other solutions are going to work. So I'm looking at this, I'm very skeptic, very, um, um, it's not that I don't approve of it, I see what they're trying to, you're trying to do with it. I'm just very skeptic that it's going to solve anything. That's just my thoughts.
Well, Bob, I was going to tell you just one more point before Elizabeth goes on is that there was an article in the paper about a micro-apartment complex being built. And we're talking, we're talking 212 square feet. And the base rent is going to be $1,009 per month.
What, what are we doing to ourselves?
So.
Wait a minute now, people.
As to our next generation.
People can't afford anything other than that.
Denise.
No, I'm just reporting information, I'm not making a value judgment about it.
I know, but the $1,000 a month that somebody who owns the house, if they put.
No, no, this is apartment complex.
Apartment complex, right, but if you.
No, no, not here, this is in, somewhere going to be built in Portland.
Right, but if you generate a new housing unit, I, and there's multiple ways that we've heard tonight how you can do that. And it's $1,000 or $1,500 to rent. It's better for that missing middle segment of the population in the metro area here or Blackmanus County that can't find a house. They, they have to go up to $450,000, $500,000, five, $600,000 in a young startup or.
That's why, that's why we shouldn't be, Portland be allowing to tear down all these little tiny houses that people couldn't still afford.
But if they want to tear them down in Portland and we can produce a, some housing, whatever variety it is, it generates, like Bob was saying, he's looking to protect the value of his property. And I'm not picking on your property, it could be mine or anybody's. A way of increasing the value of your property is if you get an ADU of 800 square foot or whatever size and it's a regular, it fits in there and all that, that increases the value. You, you're going to, to somebody, and as I said earlier, may not be my first choice or yours, but down the road, if we want more density, somebody's going to do that.
And just to add to that, I think that when you take an older home, like I've seen in, in northeast Portland, I lived in northeast Portland off 33rd near Grant. But I mean, if you take some of these older homes, they're a modern home, I've lived there, and you'd start changing the face of them and they're putting, dividing them all up. The house I wanted to buy back, the house I lived in all my life, they divided the property up and they had apple trees, cherry trees and all that. I would have bought that back and, um, but they divided it off and put a house there. And then this, the house is not the same anymore. But changing the structure of a house by dividing up in three or four, two, three or four, whatever, to me, we lose the character of those older homes, those craftsmen homes that were so beautiful and they're still nice to look at. But dividing them up and doing all these changes, again, just my personal opinion, um, God, I just think it ruins the, the charm of Oregon City or any of the areas, Alameda specifically, whenever I go over there and all those districts, just to get my thoughts.
That's the dilemma we're facing is planning for the future.
But how can you, even then, when you divide up your property, as I said earlier, it seems to me we're cramming people in. I feel like, like an old-world country in Europe or Russia, I mean, or someplace where you're cramming as many people in as you can in a small area and it makes it uncomfortable for everybody, in my way of thinking.
Last time I looked, there were seven billion of us.
But it is about handling problems, so, I mean, it's not like we're waking up and cramming people.
We keep inviting them here.
To bring accommodations for people that are coming into this region.
I'd vote for Tom McCall.
So we have to look at it.
These are, these are good points you're making about general planning and the urban growth boundary. But I'd like to bring it back to the topic.
So I need to stop us here for a minute because I need to ask the commissioners how long they want to go tonight before we go any further, because it's already been mentioned to me twice.
I'm good till 9:30, no problem.
Okay, well, I'll say 9:30 so they can kind of wrap up all this.
Mr. B, you?
Good.
Paul?
Yep.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah. So to answer this, we didn't, which is two, three, four.
I say two, plus an ADU, that'd be three.
I'll go along with you. I still say two, but.
I, I think Paul was emphasizing the word maximum there. Maximum of four doesn't really say every internal conversion can get four houses. There's some discretion left up to the building department issuing the permit and the pre-apps and the stuff that go on there that say. You may want four, but we're not going to approve anything more than three.
Paul Edgar's house, kidding.
No, kidding, do that.
Where do you sit on the two, three or four internal conversion?
Four, okay, I guess.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm with you, two plus.
So we have, we have three, three.
In order to move it along, I'll just go ahead and say maximum four.
Let's put a gun on the table.
All right. So on this issue, it sounds like we've got consensus about.
No, we have a split vote.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm de-conflicting, so I'm good with, with four.
So when the going gets tough, you just cave.
That's right, because, because I'm going to need it later and I'm going to hold the line and you guys are going to be like, why can't you compromise? And I'll say, I did once, once.
Trading chips.
So next, Denise, can I suggest something?
Sure.
In the 15 minutes that we have left, I'd like to ask that Elizabeth be allowed to complete the PowerPoint as quickly as possible and then you guys can ask questions back about which ones are important.
Yeah, well, how about we just start, let's do an overview of the remaining housing types that we haven't had a chance to discuss and then we'll just go around and whichever aspects of those you think are most pressing, um, you know, particularly if there's something you want us to look into more or make refinements before we come back to you next time. or make refinements before we come back to you next time. If you could focus your comments on that, that could help us be productive. Or whatever you think are your top priorities.
Waste of time, there we go.
Okay, so next one, we're open to naming suggestions here, but we came up with three to four plexes to capture uses that are triplexes and fourplexes. And you can currently do that, those are currently classified as multifamily residential. And so you can only do that in the R2 zone. And proposal is to open up those smaller opportunities in the R5 and the R3.5 zones. So there's dimension and density standards. The short version is that you can build these three and four plexes at the same density as a duplex, which is to say, if you wanna build a fourplex, you need two standard sized lots. So we're not putting four units on one lot, we're putting four units on two lots or one and a half lots if you do a triplex. There are design standards proposed to support these. And they offer an option, if you're doing something more like the top option with side by side units, then the option is to meet the townhouse design standards. And if you want to do something more like the stacked units in the lower left, then you would meet the multifamily design standards. All right, cluster housing is one, we've rebranded cottage housing and really tried to open it up to make it a more feasible development type. This is one of the sort of textbook cottage housing examples. And it looks great, a lot of, I won't presume to know your tastes. A lot of communities really like the look of this. But these smaller units have tended to be difficult to build. And so they have been permitted in Oregon City, but seen very limited adoption. So we're proposing some pretty significant rewrites that maintain the existing density bonuses for cluster housing, allowing smaller units up to 1,500 square feet. That's an increase from the current 1,200 square feet. And a greater variety of residential types. So they don't have to be these detached cottages, depending on which zone you're in. If you're in the low density zones, they still have to be detached. If you're in the medium density, you get some opportunities to do complexes or townhouses. And if you're in R2 and you wanna do a cottage housing or a cluster housing, you can do apartments, you can do any of those types up to and including apartments. And the benefit is a variety of how your lots are configured and your relationship to the street. So idea of maintaining a central cluster where there's a central common open space, by bringing together all that open space, you create a focal point for the development rather than orienting everything to the street. So.
What's the minimum lot size?
It depends on the zone. The minimum, there's two different ways to do these. One is you can have an overall site that you develop, like multifamily housing, multiple units on one lot. So the minimum lot size there is 10,000 square feet for minimum of four units. And, well, and alternative, if you want to use a subdivision process concurrently with your cluster housing proposal, to break it up, then the minimum lot sizes vary. And they're tied to the zone and they range from.
This looks like an office.
They are in. They're on page 32, approximately the middle of the page. And minimum lot sizes can be as low as a range of 3,500 square feet in the R10 zone, down to 1,500 square feet in the R2 zone. And that's tied to the density bonuses that are already permitted for these cluster housing options. So with the, the idea with the changes from cottage to cluster housing is permitting greater variety. So here are some examples of, you know, whether you wanna call it courtyard housing or garden apartments, just different ways that these clusters of four to 12 units could be arranged on a lot to cluster around an open space rather than everyone being oriented towards the street frontage. Just a few different options to click through here. Next one, I actually apologize, I could not find a good image for this. Not, which really speaks to the difficulty of doing live work units. Something that is one of those great urban planning ideas, you know. I mean, it's my profession, I love it, but sometimes we don't have ideas that fit every context. And live work units can sometimes feel like that. There are existing standards in the code to permit live work units. They're currently proposed, or they're currently allowed in R2. And the proposal was to expand them to allow an R5 and R3.5. In sort of a roundabout way, PAT didn't really address whether they're allowed in R5 and R3.5. I think that we sort of overlooked that in the process. And they wound up proposing to remove them in R2. So the current recommendation, and I don't think this was a holistic recommendation, which is why we're benefiting from going over this in its entirety through Planning Commission and City Commission adoption. The PAT recommendation wound up being to allow them in the R5 and the R3.5 zone while striking them in the R2. And I would suggest that that could be revisited. The idea about striking them from R2 was just that they're not very popular and so really what's the point in allowing them? Sort of one of those questions about, well, if they're not that popular, no one's gonna build them. Does it hurt anything to allow them? Are we providing additional diversity and opportunities? Or by taking them out, are we streamlining the code and helping people better focus on the types of housing that are more likely to be built and that we would like to support?
You're talking about these being built?
By allowing them in the zoning code, we are opening up the potential that they could in fact be built, yes.
Okay, but we're not, we're looking, we're all, but what about the potential to have them existing? See, that's what, that's what, that's what you said is confusing.
Perhaps Pete could clarify, do we have a, what's the existing live work unit scenario in the city?
I thought it was a home occupation.
If it's a permitted use in the zone, then there's a set of standards that apply to it.
Oh, I guess any.
Are there any built?
Not yet, no.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about how the live work affects existing units. We're only talking about new units.
Okay, so you need to put a big asterisk because I'm gonna go back to my point. You can't build it as a live work unit.
You can build as a work live.
Okay, and then I believe this is the last type to talk over this evening. Multifamily residential is proposed, so local example. There's dimensional and density standards. It boils down to 2,000 square feet per, well, in the R2 zone is where we primarily see multifamily residential. But as we'll get to in some of our subsequent sessions, they are also permitted in the commercial and mixed use zones. But as far as our base residential zones that we're focusing on tonight, R2 is one unit per 2,000 square feet of lot area. There are significant updates to the, to the design standards that are proposed in your packets. And one question for your consideration that wasn't discussed much by PAT is that multifamily residential is currently a master plan use in the R3.5 zone, meaning you could do it if you go through a master plan process. So question, does that still sound right? There was not a lot of discussion about that, does that sound right? Should it move to a different category of use? Should it be removed entirely or where to go with that? One last piece to note, in the R2 zone, we're proposing an affordable housing density bonus of up to 20%. And this graphic, I apologize, is a little misleading. It would not necessarily be a height bonus. The height limit would stay the same if you use the bonus in the R2 zone. It would simply allow you an additional 20% of units, up to 20% if the units in the building were built to be affordable to households making 80% of the area median income guaranteed for a minimum of 30 years.
Where would you build that?
And thank you, that is overview. And I'd like to turn it over and I'll defer to the chair as to how she'd like to go through this.
Let me throw out my concern about the master planning process for.
R3.5?
I thought we had discussed at the PAT that we were going to say that that was applied only to the concept plan areas. And the reason I'm saying that is I live in 3.5. I don't see that occurring in my neighborhood, period. There's a lot of 3.5 in the historic district. When we envisioned master planning for that, when we were developing the concept plans, that was our vision, that we would do that in the concept plan areas. And we allowed for some 3.5 in South End and in Beaver Creek and a little bit in Park Place.
I think the other consideration was with the R3.5 zones up off Holcomb Boulevard for the Housing Authority Properties redevelopment and.
Is that part of the Park Place master plan?
No.
No, it's not, but they did a master plan back in 2010. And it had a variety of units as part of the master plan proposal. So that was kind of, that was part of the.
Well, then maybe that means to have an asterisk that says that you have to have a certain amount of property in order to do that.
Yeah, like a minimum acreage.
Right, a minimum acreage of some sort.
Well, and I think if we sent it through the master plan process, there is a minimum acreage requirement.
Yeah, but we just changed the minimum acreage for master plans.
Right, but we want it to be in this section so that they both cross reference. And then again.
Great, we'll take a look at that.
It's appropriate for, it's super appropriate for us to do this in the concept plan areas. It is not applicable to anything that's already existing in our community.
Unless it's a minimum acreage.
Right, unless it's a minimum acreage. So that's why it needs to be both things. Because when we were, particularly when we were doing South End and I was talking to, and now my brain is just completely dying. Sat next to me over here is the guy, is the realtor, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, Adam Zick.
Adam. He said, oh, this is perfect for the concept plan areas. And I said, okay, I agree with you. We were doing South End, I said, I can see that. That is how we want that to develop in those little town centers where you've got commercial and you could have some cluster development around it. It's perfect and it works. So is there a way we can put that in to cross-reference that?
Yeah, we'll take a look.
And put an acreage requirement?
Yes.
2 acres.
Well, whatever the acres is, you know, whatever we think is appropriate. I mean, Pete can make a suggestion to us.
Well, if you take the Housing Authority properties into question, I think they're, what, 20, I wanna say just under 20 acres.
I think it is, I think it is, just around 20.
So, I mean, 10 seems reasonable.
I think 10 sounds reasonable. Because in order to make it cost effective and developable, you need to have a little chunk of property.
Right, and then 10 would match what the current code.
Right.
Right, but you're proposing changing the master plan.
For this.
I don't, we are, I don't know that we've set a minimum acreage.
We haven't set that.
For a residential master plan yet. So that's where your feedback is very valuable.
I think, I think 10 sounds reasonable. Do you think 10 sounds reasonable?
Yeah. I'm okay with what you've shown us, I've got, well, notes, you know, deal with that. For the next work session, I definitely would like to have a discussion about, and it might be Laura that needs to be here for that, is this transitional housing stuff.
Right. We weren't planning to tackle that tonight.
No, that's fine, I have no problem with that. I just, I wanna make sure that especially, that's like a discussion in a work session versus.
Right up front.
Like a hearing.
I agree.
Can I ask a logistical question, just so the commission's clear? You all distributed this. And we were, we were cross-referencing this today by page numbers. And then Pete left this on the diet.
Which is not the same.
They are, they are not the same.
They're not the same.
This one includes all of the whole chapter, right?
Yes.
Of these changes.
No.
So that.
I'd say there's still some work that needs to be done to integrate.
So what you're asking the planning commission to focus on is this one?
Well, leave that to Pete, for my purposes, yes.
I think Pete's.
Most of the, most of the large packet is still relevant and.
Yes, I, I don't think there's a lot of overlap.
There's not a lot of overlap.
So this is, this is equitable housing and this is other.
That is equitable housing and other.
Okay, so you're gonna, so.
All of the above.
Okay, I just, I wasn't clear, so I wasn't sure if the planning commission. Apparently they were clear, but I was not.
I was only clear about two minutes ago.
Well, because, for instance, the 1714 is completely struck. And there's nothing in this packet to say what's replacing it. So we need to integrate that with this packet.
Correct.
But is this packet, is the 1714 in this packet entire? Or is it just, okay, so I could rip that page out, staple it to this.
Yes, and again, and I apologize, that was because I wasn't able to complete the code amendments. And so we will fully, fully integrate those two packets. But for the purpose of new material, to replace those fully struck out chapters, the information in the package should be.
So all the stuff we covered tonight is in here.
Correct.
We did not cover the rest of the stuff in here. And we will cover the rest of the stuff in our session another time.
Yes.
With the exception of my reference to 1754.
Right.
But that.
I'd like to add to the list a further in-depth discussion about page 12 in the small packet. It has to do with residential landscaping and the, particularly since we've had some issues with that.
The tree requirement?
Yes.
About what?
Just dealing with trees.
Yeah.
And tree requirements and removal. I wanna, I wanna have a discussion regarding making the paid into the tree fund an option, that's the last resort, that they have to demonstrate. Yes, that they have to demonstrate that they can't do the other two. They don't get an automatic buy-in to just put the trees in a tree fund. It's like, gee, I don't like my street trees, so I'm gonna cut them all down and then come to the city and say, look, I'll pay you in lieu of it and it'll go on the street fund.
And I'm curious as to why we went from 35 to 30 for the street tree.
Spacing.
Spacing, yeah. And that's fine, that's for next time.
Sure, and could you add for next time too, what it is that we are requiring them to pay per tree? So let's say that we require them to pay $1,000 per tree.
What is it based on?
No, not what it's based on, whatever it is, so I'm just making it up. So let's say we require them to pay.
I cut down 16 eight foot wide oats.
I'll pay $16,000 in the tree fund.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just using as an example.
These are normally in a separate fee schedule so that the code doesn't have to be updated.
Right, so I wanna see. So if you cut down a tree and it's, let's say it's $1,000, I wanna see it be triple or double that. I want it to be a disincentive to put stuff in the tree fund unless they can prove definitively they can't do option one or two. We have to put the kibosh on people going around town, cutting down their street trees and then.
And writing a check.
And then writing a check.
Interesting you bring that up because as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot of trees that the city approved back in 2000 to 2003 that are now tearing up the sidewalks. Yet the people have to buy a permit to remove the trees and they have to repair the sidewalks themselves. But it was the city that approved the trees that went in. And all the neighborhoods, I heard about it on the CIC.
We heard about it.
And I've seen it all over, my neighborhood is just everywhere. But the city approved those trees, yet.
Believe me.
But the person's required to replace it.
We went through a lot of discussion about that with the Natural Resources Commission.
It's an upcoming article in Oregon City News.
Yeah, and we were in the paper, yeah. And it had to do with the older street standards being only three feet wide.
Right, and they didn't accommodate.
And the older street tree list had a lot of inappropriate.
We didn't say they changed.
Inappropriate now. And that got changed in 2012.
But the rest of us are stuck with that.
No.
No.
I mean, that's why we created these additional options. And the permit is actually free. The sidewalk permit is not free.
Right.
That's the.
Yeah, the cities that approved it, that's, I'm hearing it from my HOA and other people.
Let me explain, I planted a tree that was on the city's approved street tree list. I have, I have a small parking strip. The tree was appropriate. Of the three I planted, only one of them screwed up. It started, literally the other two were fine. It started sending its roots towards the direction that we didn't want it to go. I was able to remove the tree, replant a tree, I replaced my sidewalk.
At your expense?
Yes.
But the city approved it in the first place.
I, I just.
It's a different subject.
I picked it from the list, it was the one I wanted, I picked it from the list. I was able to delay planting my tree because this, our neighborhood was participating in the Friends of Trees tree planting event. That's what you guys need to do. You can get the Friends of Trees to come in, get those trees taken out and put in more appropriate ones, they will cost you $35 a piece.
But ours isn't the only one, there's neighborhoods.
I know, but I'm just talking about.
And it is the trees, it's the sidewalk. And that's why I was gonna say, when I was on city commission, one of the neighborhoods, I don't remember which one, around Partlow, I think.
It was around Partlow.
They had like 80% of their sidewalks heaved. And so they got together as a group, they came to the city, and they said, what the hell? And, and the city basically made a deal with, they, they provided the trees, or they did the tear out, and then the city provided the cement, or something, there was some sort of like quid pro quo that didn't cost them a hundred percent.
They involved Friends of Trees, and that's how they were replaced.
There's nothing about that in here for the future?
No, but that's something.
Shall we adjourn?
Oh, yeah, right.
Let's adjourn.
So any announcements?
I do not have any announcements.
And our next work session, we are going to try to do when?
Five thirty on August thirteenth, before the. Yes.
Five thirty thirteenth?
Wow, with that bold in the next email, it's okay.
I will.
He's got a calendar, I, I don't have my calendar.
That's the next meeting, it's just, it's an hour and a half before the meeting.
Before the hearing.
Yeah.
We are not having a hearing on the fifteenth, we can't, we're not.
Well, you, you can, it's already publicly noticed, but you can, you know.
You can publicly notice that it's more than two weeks away.
Yeah, I don't even wanna continue.
You can publicly notice it as a work session.
We're not ready.
It's, it's already gone in the mail, but you can continue.
We're, we're definitely not ready.
That's what the Measure eleven, Measure fifty-six notices were all about, and they have that date on them, so.
Then we'll have a lot of people here for the work session.
You said August the fifteenth?
August thirteenth.
Oh, thirteen, I was gonna say, August the fifteenth is the Wednesday.
Yeah.
I'll be an advocate of that.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing.
Not yet.
Well, the city can't do new measure decisions, so we're gonna hold the public hearing, and we'll continue it, okay?
And we can convert it to a work session.
So public, we are not gonna do that, we're gonna be continuing, because we're not ready.
Be prepared for a long work session.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have any items on the agenda on the fifteenth, regular items?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth or what?
I think we've been holding it open for this.
Okay, so we're gonna have, yeah, we're gonna be work sessioning. And are you, um, for the record, that's five thirty, that is dinnertime, or are we bringing our own dinner?
Well, we can, we, we'll rethink this based on what you've just said, as far as the start time.
We could make it a potluck. I hear Bob, Tony is a good cook.
But it's gonna be continued and converted into a work session, and we just make it a work session.
And we can put the notice out in other manners.
At least.
Yeah. They're saying Taco Bell. I move that we adjourn, and we are not gonna have dinner from Taco Bell.